I'd like to welcome everyone to Town Council Remote Meeting, Zoom Meeting, Monday, July 20, 2020. It's 6:31 PM. First off, we have a call to order. Any disclosures of interest? Seeing none. Do we gotta do this first? Did you want to do this? All right. First up, we have adoption of previous council minutes, Council of June 15th. We need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counsel Frank, second by Counsel Vane. Moved by Counsel Frank, second by Counsel Vane. Resolved that the minutes from the June 15th council meeting and the July 6th and July 13th special council meetings be approved. Recorded vote, Counsel Bothwell?
Yay.
Counsel Dunstall?
Yay.
Counsel Frank?
Yay.
Counsel Cadwell?
I'm gonna say yes, because I thought that's what the clerk proposed in an email. Yes.
Yes, you're absolutely right. Counsel Ritchie?
Yes.
Counsel Sharp? Counsel Sharp, you just need to unmute.
Trying to.
Okay. All right. Counsel Vane?
Yes.
Counsel Vardy?
Yes.
And myself, I'm a yes, so that's carried. We have three delegations tonight. Up first, we have Mr. Matt Johnson from Urban Solutions, Planning and Land Development Consultants regarding the sign variance application from 270 Hunter Road. Welcome, Matt.
Hello, thank you. I assume everyone can hear me okay? Thank you. First of all, kudos to Grimsby for hosting virtual committee and council meetings. I know it's not easy, but the development industry certainly appreciates all the efforts of staff and yourselves to put up with it, because I know it's not easy. To start off, I do have a detailed presentation here, but really, Grimsby welcomed Launa to town back in 2017 by doing a zoning bylaw amendment to accommodate a commercial school, in this case, a technical training facility for the for Launa. Since that time, we've been working with city or town staff and regional staff to finalize the site plan approval. And that site plan approval has been finalized, and now we're working through the building permit process. Now, I'm just trying to see how I can flip through my slideshow.
Matt, you have control of it, so you can flip through.
I, okay, I'm trying to do page down. There we go. Okay. So again, the technical name in this case is 34 West Avenue Northink, but this is Launa Local 837, who are, again, happy to be coming to Grimsby. The sign that we're looking to have approved is shown here. Essentially, we're just asking for relief in terms of the sign area. The location of the sign will be right at the QE frontage with exposure to the QEW. We do have sign off from the region of Niagara. We do have a sign permit for the proposed sign from NTO. And again, here's the technical relief. We're going up just over 100 square feet in sign area. And, and the next two slides are good to look at closely. Here's the sign permit that has been approved. And when we make the change to the relief we're asking for today, I jump to the proposed. So you can see, it's really that permanent Launa logo that requires the additional relief. So the video portion of the sign complies to the area. What we're asking for is a little relief, so we can frame it with the Launa brand. One slide with a bit of information on the local themselves. Essentially, we're talking about having 5,000 people come to Grimsby for training in this facility every year. Launa is excited to be there. And with that, I'd be really happy to answer any other questions. I'll jump back to
Just, just, Matt, thank you for your report, or your delegation. We're going to have a report that's tied to this. So we'll direct questions and comments other than clarification right now for that time.
Sure.
Thank you. Need him. Can we get him on? There we go. There we go. Need a mover and seconder. Counsel Vane, mover. And Counsel Vardy, seconder. Moved by Counsel Vane, second by Counsel Vardy. Resolved that the delegation from Matt Johnson, Urban Solutions, Planning and Land Development Consultants, be received. Recorded vote, Counsel Bothwell?
Yes.
Counsel Dunstall?
Yes.
Counsel Frank?
Yes.
Counsel Cadwell?
Yes.
Counsel Cadwell, yes. Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counsel Sharp?
Yes.
Counsel Vane?
Yes.
Counsel Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes, so that's carried. Our second delegation is Sean Polden, Canal Side Soda Company. I just want to say, welcome to Grimsby, Sean. I looked at your presentation and talked to you as well, and you have some really interesting ideas for sodas. And we're really happy to welcome you to the town of Grimsby. So without further ado, welcome, Sean.
Sean, can you hear us? We can't hear you. Hi, we see you, but Sean?
Hi, Sean. We can't hear you right now. We can see the start of your presentation, but we're, we can't hear you. So you should have control to unmute yourself.
Unmute is in the bottom-left corner of your screen. If you press spacebar, you can usually talk too if you press the spacebar.
Hi, Sean. Since we're having technical difficulties and we can't hear you, we're going to move on to the delegation number three, Mr. Brian Drost, and we'll get back to you. And if you can call in. If you can't get this rectified. Oh, there, you're connecting now. Okay, so we can change again. And can we hear you now?
I can hear you. I couldn't before. So I think what happened was the, I got the screen control before I got the ability to join the audio. Can you hear me now? Yeah. Awesome. Okay. Well, hi, everyone. Thanks so much for having me. So my name is Sean Polden. I'm the Chief Soda Officer with Canal Side Soda Company, and I'm very excited to be talking about Grimsby being our new home. We're a very new startup company. We've been around for, since just about December. And, you know, it's been a very interesting kind of growing experience, you know, given current circumstances. So I'm trying to change screen. There we go. And I don't know if I did that. Yeah, okay, there we go. So what I'm hoping to do today, oh, and I'm flipping through screens that so what I'm looking to just do is kind of give you a little bit of an overview of who we are, what we've done so far, where we're looking at going, you know, why we're excited to be calling Grimsby our new home. And, you know, some of the growth potential that we, that we see, you know, with, with this home that we've found in particular. So, you know, the company started out just in December, you know, me selling soda, different flavors that I've, you know, kind of developed at the farmer's market, very small batches, 20 liters. It came with great early success, you know, particularly my Caribbean-style ginger beer. We ended up, you know, getting some very good media coverage. You know, the local newspapers ran the story. CHCH Television came and made some fun soda with me. You know, from there, you know, the demand, you know, we recognized was there. So we ended up ramping up our production. All of our production so far has been offsite in Port De Luce. And, you know, so far since the beginning of May, we've produced over 7,000 liters of product. A lot of that has come from the support of, you know, local partners who've, you know, recognized that we're filling a gap in the local agrifoods industry, you know, particularly providing, you know, premium non-alcoholic beverages. While they're non-alcoholic beverages, they, they go really good, really well with the local alcohols that we have. You know, you know, as we see kind of in the photo here with Dylan's offering it currently with their, with their, excuse me, vodka through a Moscow Mule package. We sell at a number of farmers markets in addition to having some local retailers. We're fortunate to be at the Grimsby Farmers Market, as well as another number of others in the, in the local area. What we're presenting, you know, in addition to our drinks, when we talk to people who are interested in our beverages, is, you know, what we're looking at, you know, what, what, what we're actually looking at doing with the fruit. You know, we're, we're looking to be a leader in premium non-alcoholic beverages. You know, we're, we're taking soda back 200 years, you know, to, you know, its origins, where it was originally intended to be a means to preserve the life of agricultural, agricultural goods, and particularly tender fruits, which I'll come back to in a little bit. Our main products are our Caribbean-style ginger beer, our tart cherry lime, orange bean. Our cherries are locally made. Sorry, our Niagara-grown cherries, I'm sorry. While these other flavors, the ginger beer and the orange are not local, what we will be doing particularly as we are able to use the fruits that are on our farm, you know, particularly the apples and grapes, peaches, plums, and so on, is to use those in order to develop custom flavors in addition to these. That brings us to the property. Our, the soda shop is at the soda shop, we're going to be using traditional agricultural means in order to juice locally grown agriculture. That will extend the life of it. They've been, it was, was used, you know, going back 200 years prior to refrigeration. You know, this was a very common way of preserving the tender fruit, making sure that the life of it's extended. Oh, sorry, I went back too far and I lost that screen. Where I was going to be talking about the property itself, it is a 78-acre parcel of land with five acres of woodlot, another eight acres or so of wetland. Seven acres is what I'll be using for my immediate purposes, which includes approximately 700 apple trees, two acres of vineyard. In addition to what my agricultural operation, there is also, the balance of the 78 acres is grown with cash crop, which in the longer term, I hope to convert to tender fruit. Now, the property, it's been used for a long time as a juicing facility. It was the Don Currie with Concord Mountain Farms was the prior owner, immediate to me having this operation. And he operated there for about 22 years. The building that, that I'm operating out of was built as a juicing facility in response to another large, I believe it was Welch's, that about 12 years ago or 10 years ago or so left the region. And this building was built in response to that in order to save the crops that were grown on the, on the farm. So, you know, I'm very excited about continuing that use. We plan on starting our bottling there as soon as, you know, we're, we're allowed to. And, you know, we're, we're working with the building and planning in order to, to get that through. Once we do that, we're also hoping to, you know, offer our products, you know, from the store. And long-term growth, there's other additional buildings that are on the, the property that are, that are currently there that we're looking to grow into longer term. We hope to offer a tasting experience that's inclusive. We'd love to have families come to our, you know, Soda Shack, line a flight of sodas in front of, you know, your kids or grandkids, you know, and have your kid pick the bottle that, you know, the flavor that they want like the most and bring it home. And, you know, with that, I hope I've shared a little bit of the vision of what we hope to bring to Grimsby. We look forward to, you know, working with each of you in order to make that possible.
Great. Thank you so much for your presentation. And again, I'd like to welcome you to, to the town of Grimsby. And counsel, do we have any questions? For Sean?
I have one question, Mayor Jordan.
All right, Counsel Sharp?
Sean, when will we be able to buy, and where can we buy your soda?
Well, so, so I actually have a little bit of a production lull right now. So one of the things that I've found, and one of the reasons why it's like really urgent for me to kind of get up and going at this new facility right now, is that like, because I'm using a brewery, there's a really high possibility of cross-contamination with brewers' yeast. You know, so, so I'm actually getting like a little bit of post-packaging, you know, I had to actually throw out about $6,000 worth of inventory because of it turning into a very lovely cherry wine.
Yeah, hard soda.
Yeah, so, so until I actually rectify that, I unfortunately have no product to offer. I've, you know, so it's something that I'm working on fixing very quickly.
Well, that's great, Sean, and I'm excited. So when you do, I know you have my email address and my phone number. Let me know. And I'd like to try some of your soda.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks for the presentation.
Sorry about that, counsel. I didn't have the speakers list up on my screen, and I have it now. I apologize for that. Counsel Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Jordan. And Sean, we talked briefly a little while ago and welcomed to Grimsby. And I think what you're doing, what you're promoting, your business, agriculture, there's not a whole lot of that in Grimsby right now, and I think this is great, what you're planning to do, especially through this, these very trying times with the COVID-19. You know, and I wish you all the success. And I look forward to visiting you up on 324 30 Road. And yeah, again, I think it's great what you're doing. So it's just, you mentioned you've got seven acres that you'll be farming. So that gives you, obviously, that's, that's a lot of product, a lot of trees, as you mentioned. So is there, you plan to use any farming elsewhere at all, Sean?
Yeah, I, in fact, I already am. You know, so cherries, there aren't any cherries that are currently grown on the farm. So I get those from Cherry Lane in Beinland. You know, very, very close by, you know, a number of, you know, they source cherries from a lot, you know, a number of local cherry farms from all across, you know, the Niagara region. And, but in addition to that, you know, peaches, you know, strawberries, you know, a number of other different berries. There are quite a few of other local fruits that I'll be able to incorporate. And one of the things that I've actually found, you know, from, from, from being at farmers markets, I'm talking to farmers who have produce that are, that's, that's ready for me to use like that day, right? You know, it's like, you know, okay, I've, I've, I've got all of these blackberries that are ready, for example. You know, what am I going to do with them? You know, they're either going to throw them in a freezer and hope that they can find somebody to sell them in the future, you know, or they can, you know, give them to me, and I can do something a little fun and innovative with it.
Yeah, great. Just one more question, Sean, if I may. Once you're up and running, what is your proposed, what's, how much staff are you looking at with your company? I'm just curious of the number.
Yes.
One to mention too, Sean, is we have our Economic Development Officer starting very, very soon. So hopefully, there'll be some communications there for you with our EDO. So, yeah, just going back to the number of staff possibly you're hoping for?
Yeah, so, so in the immediate term, I have five employees to immediately place in this home, which is, you know, one of the reasons why I needed to kick them out of my garage. But, you know, like, we're moving, growing very rapidly. I anticipate to be, to be at a dozen employees, you know, hopefully by the end of the year, if, if all goes according to our plans. Currently, you know, I started out in December, just as me. So, you know, things, things have, have moved pretty quickly and are going to continue to.
Sounds like a good Shark Tank success story here. And I welcome you to Grimsby, and I wish you all the, all the, all the, a lot of success, Sean. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cadwell.
Counsel Dunstall?
Thank you, Your Worship. Hi, Sean. I must say that I've had the opportunity to try one of your sodas at the Grimsby Farmers Market and really enjoyed it. So it looks like you're off to a great start. Are you planning, as this grows, to look, looking for a distributor to distribute your product, other than selling it right from, it looked like you're going to sell it to retail, but are you going to distribute it through a distributor?
Yes, and, and, and different products will have different, different different ways that I will be offering it, and different ways that I'll be actually manufacturing them as well, you know, based on demands. And, and, you know, like, really, there's, you know, my, my products have a few different tracks. You know, you know, for example, the products that I'm currently offering, which are the, the, the orange, the cherry, the ginger beer. I am, like, those flavors, producing them in my own facility, I'm going to outgrow my own facility with those flavors themselves very, very quickly, you know. So, so, so for those ones, you know, I am going to be looking at more of a co-packer for those, where like, you know, I wouldn't actually necessarily make those flavors on-site. I would maybe make a concentrate on-site, and that would, but, but that would more than likely go elsewhere. What I'll be doing more so on-site is those smaller batches that, that are with the more artisanal flavors, you know, and those ones will be on-site. The ones that I produce, you know, at a, at a, at a large, more industrial-type setting, you know, like, those ones will definitely be going out for mass production. You know, like, I'll more than likely retail them from my store as, as well as one of my products. But, you know, you know, but yeah, those will definitely be, be, be done with a distributor.
Thank you. I enjoyed your presentation, and you look like one heck of an entrepreneur to stick your neck out at this time in the economic climate. So I, I want to wish you the best. It sounds like you're going to employ lots of people, and that's, that's a great bonus for us in Grimsby. So thank you for your presentation.
All right. Thank you very much, Counsel Dunstall.
Counsel Vardy?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I had the pleasure of talking already with Sean and learning about his products, and I'm really excited that you decided to make Grimsby your home. So I guess what I would say to our CEO is, how best can we help facilitate Sean with some of the challenges he's facing with respect to permits and planning, et cetera? Perhaps he'd be a good case study for Economic Development Officer to see how he could also be of assistance to Sean.
If, if, if I may, I, I, I think that, you know, the, the the experience that I've had is, I, I, I think has been exceptional in so much that, you know, like, from a, from a planning perspective, you know, the zoning on this property changed in 2014. You know, so, so in terms of like the actual research for this property that's, that's been done, I understand particularly in these current times when, 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 you know, I'm sure that there's challenges accessing certain documents and, and, you know, communications back and forth are difficult. I think from, 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 from my perspective, it would be really helpful to have one person that is a point of contact that really, I guess, really, you know, understands what my pains are and what, what, what the support I really need and would best you know, kind of move my case forward, you know. So, you know, maybe it's a little bit more cohesive, right? I am looking forward to working with the Economic Development Officer. You know, like, I think, I think that, you know, this new individual and I are going to be able to do, you know. You know, if you're, if you're looking for a case study, I'm happy to kind of work and do that and see what kind of fun, innovative stuff that we can do and, you know, create a model for other businesses to kind of follow in Grimsby.
Thank you, Sean. Counselor Frake is up next.
Welcome, Sean. Nice to see you again.
Hello, thank you. Good to see you as well.
Been a while. Well, I just want to say thank you for choosing Grimsby as your, as your new base of operations. And I got to say, I have to admire anyone who comes to town to, especially right now in this particular environment. I admire your ambition to start an operation like this. But, you know, it's something we need, and I think this, you're right. I think, yeah, Counselor Vardy was right. This is a great case study, because I think you're probably the first, will be the first, the new business for us to look at in terms of our new EDO. So maybe you can both turn some things together. And the fact that, you know, we're an agricultural community, I think it's great that we see, and hopefully we'll see more entrepreneurs like you come to town to do this type of thing. And if there's anything I'm sure on this council that we can do to help you out, I'm sure we'll be just all over you. We want, we want to see you succeed for sure. Welcome to Grimsby. Lots of luck. Congratulations, and I can't wait to try one of those sodas in my vodka. Make that a Dylan's vodka. Thanks for your presentation. Look forward to seeing you again.
All right, thank you, Counselor Frake.
Counselor Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I did have the pleasure, and hi, Sean, again, of getting one of the last few bottles of his tart cherry lime soda at the Grimsby Farmers Market recently. I did make the mistake, though, of thinking that I could save some of it in the fridge, and I used one of those corks, like those wine stopper things. And then I left it in the fridge, and then I took it out the next day to finish it off, and it's like opening a champagne bottle. Okay, so it was like, just be cautious if you save it, to very carefully open your bottle if you cork it with something. And then I thought, another great thing you could do is, love the flavors, and I think the orange would be great, too, is at your little shop up there, have your ice cream stand, and you can do like a root beer float, but only with your tart cherry or your orange, and have the kids make themselves some floats with some ice cream. So, it's an idea. But I wish you all the best and lots of luck and success in your venture. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell.
Counselor Bane.
Hi, Sean. Welcome. Couple of quick questions. First one is, your name seems very familiar, and maybe I'm going to look bad by asking this, but how do I know your name?
I, I think through Facebook, maybe, social media.
Oh, could be, could be, or it could be the wanted posters at the post office, too, but that's okay.
I've, no, I've worked in the Niagara community for quite a while. You know, I've managed some nonprofit organizations and, you know, I've had a consulting practice here, you know, for 20, you know, since about 2014 or so. And, you know, I guess, I guess, you know, more recently, some of my works included, you know, I was part of the Niagara Region's Foreign Trade Zone delegation to Shanghai, China. And that was, I guess, about a year and a half ago.
Okay. All right, this is a bit of a change for you, it sounds like, going into this. But my question is very simple. You, as you were doing your presentation there, one thing that really caught my attention was that you said for larger batches and stuff like that, you might just make a concentrate and then have it done somewhere else. How do we get you to bring all of that to Grimsby? To make Grimsby your home for everything, all your production?
Well, that facility could be in Grimsby. I think one of the important things to consider there is the importance of the, of the land that I'm actually using. And like, what, the parcel of land that I have is zone specialty crop, right? And while it's used for, you know, while it's been used and is continued to be used as a bottling facility, you know, it's not meant for an industrial use, that like, you know, realistically, you know, those beverages, you know, like with the, with the, with the growth projection that I'm anticipating for them, you know, like, I don't know if it necessarily will continue to meet the, what the legislation, like the, like what it actually intends in terms of preserving agricultural lands, right? You know, so like, yeah, I could do that. I could find a facility, you know, on a more industrial piece, parcel of land in Grimsby in order to fulfill that, right? But, but in terms of like, you know, the actual intentions of this farmland, you know, I think that producing at that scale would be outside of that.
Okay, perfect. Well, best of luck. I wish you all the best, and thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bane.
Counselor Ritchie.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, Sean, great presentation. I wanted to say that I had a great opportunity to go up to the farm and take a little tour and see what everything was all about. And so you actually kind of answered a few of my questions. And I have to agree with Counselor Vardy and Counselor Frake in regards that it is a great case study to look at. And I was just hoping that you might be able to maybe write down some points, because you've been able to navigate through our town right now without an Economic Development Officer, and I'm sure that it's had some challenges. And I'm wondering if in the future, when we do get our Economic Development Officer, if you are, if you end up working with just him to continue through your process, if you'd be able to maybe give some kind of little bit of report back to our CEO or somebody on the pros and cons, whether it was easier. I hope it's easier, but if you'd just be able to maybe, maybe come back and visit us one day and let us know how it all worked out.
Yeah, well, I think that this is, you know, I see this anyways, for me, as a long-term, you know, partnership with the town of Grimsby, right? And, and, you know, I think that there's going to be multiple opportunities as the business grows and changes and evolves for us, you know, to continue to talk about, you know, process development improvement and, you know, you know, both within, you know, the organization of the town of Grimsby as well as within my own.
Thanks, Sean. Seeing no further speakers, just again, I want to welcome you to town. And fruit has been grown in the town of Grimsby for over 230 years now. And this is one instance where it's nice to see history repeating itself. Preserving fruit with sugaring and bottling is something that was done in the 1790s. And the fact that you're doing that now, albeit in a little bit more high-tech way, I really think it's, it's kind of neat that way. So anyway, thank you very much for your presentation, and we will be in touch soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan.
We need a mover and a seconder for the presentation, or the delegation. Mover, Counselor Cadwell. Second, Counselor Frake. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, second by Counselor Frake. Result of the delegation from Canal Side Soda Company be received. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frake?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Bane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes. So that's carried. Up next, we'll welcome Mr. Brian Droste. He's calling in from Sobey Road. Welcome, Brian.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm on a landline because we've got bad internet up here. So my presentation, I'm building a berm. As you understand, I'm not right there. Can you hear me? Hello?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm on a landline. I never know, like, this video stuff doesn't always work. We're building a berm. So last year, Grimsby dug up their ditch, which was great, because I did run those sites before, like the laser. I do work for Nestre, I'm a farmer. Been farming here, I've been living here for 18 years, had the farm since 93. If I talk too fast, let me know. I dug up my ditch for you guys to take your water from the road to the 30 Road, I call it the 30 Road exit. I'm building this berm, and I guess I got some problems because I, something with a permit or something, which I filled out originally. They gave me a stop worker the second time, but never the first time. I wouldn't have got this far in the first time if they would have given me a stop worker. So my plan is, I'd like to build a, put some nice topsoil on top with two feet, three feet, and put trees there so that we can certify our farmers organic in five years, because you need a 30-foot buffer with a berm that would help for spraying with Roundup. And also, we get hunters that like to hunt wild turkey and deer. That way, if they shoot the game, it's on my farm and not next door, which is a corporate site. So I'm not sure what else to say. I'm a very good farmer. If you drive by my place, you know where I live, I'm a very clean farm. Like, we're long-term here. I've been here since 93. I'm not leaving. And I don't want to remove the fill at my own expense, because that'd be very expensive. We've done a lot of maintenance here. We had a barn fire five years ago. Like, we're, like, we're not farming, we're real farmers. Like, we're not, we have cowcalf, chickens, like, we really farm. There's not many guys around here that beef cattle even. Hello? Hello?
Yes, we're listening.
I'm on the video thing, so I can't see you guys. That's the problem, eh?
Yeah, no, no problem. There is going to be a report that follows with this, so.
Yeah, I want you guys to work with me, which means I want to, I want to do it right, which means I'm going to put topsoil, put the trees on there. We're good, as I say, we're good corporate citizens, but I actually live here, so that's, that's my home. Like, I live beside an old landfill site that just drives me insane since I live here. I'm not only impressed with the site next door, so I thought if I build a berm, that might calm my wife down, because my wife gets really upset looking at that. Like, it just bugs the crop, but it really does. Like, we're not, we're not infringing on a neighbor's property, whether building a house or a farm, or, you know, there's neighbors. We're just on the berm because they already have berms over there, Miller Group, and then you got the old landfill site. We just want to make it nice.
Yeah, I understand your concerns. Counselor Bane, you have a question or a clarification?
Yeah, just a quick question. You need to comment about organics. You, are you suggesting that you need this berm to be considered organic? Is that correct? Sorry.
Sorry, well, this recording comes from your unmuted. So what's your question again?
You said that you need the berm because you have an organic farm.
Well, the thing is, down the road, we want to go organic. I'm going to put my farm in the hay production for five years, because in order to get organic, you cannot have any pesticides like Roundup or Monsanto or whatever. I built a berm for one for trees, because I can't grow trees there because it's too flat. So I want to put topsoil there, and then you raise it up because it's too flat. And then another thing is, if you go organic, you need a 30-foot buffer. So what I understand, if you build a berm, you could probably go organic, because if there's Spain next door, whatever crops you grow down the road, you won't get the wind drift, because that's the west wind. You know? And all the Grimsby, all this soil is from Grimsby. I did not import it from any other township. It's not from Toronto, not from Hamilton, it's from Grimsby. Like, I'm hoping to have a meeting with you guys again. I'm not sure if we can settle it tonight. I'd like to, but I would just want to make a deal with you guys, just, you know, do it right. I'm a very good corporate farmer. You could drive by my farm, it's very clean. I dug up the ditch for you guys, too, at my expense.
Great, thank you. We have a couple more questions from Counselors. Counselor Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yes, Counselor Frake? Just curious, can you tell us what you, what you've done already? What you've done or what you've done already, trying to get it, trying to. What, what's established? Are we waiting for something for you, or?
What's that? Hello? Hello? I'm on a landline, I should hear you. I'm not sure what's going on. Hello?
Can you hear me all right now?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
No, I'm just, I'm just curious. Are you waiting for town to get back to you something? Or are you, you have to file something with the head on what you're trying?
Well, my plan is, I didn't hear her saying, my plan is, I just want to put topsoil, put my trees on. We're going to grade it properly, because we're going to, we're going to put grass seed on top. We're going to actually cut it with a mower. I have equipment. Yeah, I took it in, I got blindsided, but yeah, I'm just trying to make it right here. That's what I'm trying to do. I'm not trying to, I don't take any money, no nothing, just want to make a beautiful farm.
The, the, the follow-up there, Brian, has the town turned you down on application or something?
No, I never, I never heard back. Did never apply. I did apply for a permit. I had a truckload for these guys. The town gave me a stop worker. I did apply for a permit. I've not heard back.
So right now, so what is, right now is the ball in our court?
Well, there is, Counselor Frake, there is a report on this tonight, so hopefully the report will clarify some things.
Okay, all right, sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So Martin Reed, the drainage inspector, I gave him the report, because I work with him well. I promised him that I would dig out my ditch. It's a ditch, not a creek, a ditch, because you guys in Goodwill dug out your creek, or creek, sorry, a ditch. So I took your water, and it runs through my farm and goes to 30 Road Culver. Yeah, I did that, obviously, at my own, my own expense. I paid out of my own pocket. I didn't ask for any money. I think you guys want a great township. I love your roads, guys. I call in all the time to do a beautiful job of cutting the grass and plowing the roads. Like, you guys do a wonderful job. I live by two townships. I can't stand West Lincoln or Lincoln, but I'm not living there. I live here in Grimsby, so I'm happy. I've been here a long time. I'm not leaving.
All right, thanks, Brian. We have a question from Counselor Cadwell.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, hi, Brian. Hear me all right?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, I guess you were saying in, report anyways, that you received the dirt from a fill operator. And I think we're pretty much all familiar with that dirt from Winston Road.
Yeah, Windward, whatever, Fustella area.
Sorry?
It came from Windward, Windward.
Yeah, yeah. But did the fill operator, because we've had some, is there any discussion between you and the fill operator? Any questions about, we asked if you've been affirmed it? I'm just curious.
Well, no, they told me that everything was good. They lied to me. They said they cleared with you guys. You met John once, I understand, and Miss Vardy met him also. Because you guys did come down, and John said, oh, yeah, it's all cleared, it's all cleared. I said, okay. He said, yeah, I talked to Dave Cadwell, talked to me, and it's all right. Someone understand that. I guess he did not.
Yeah, thanks then, Brian.
I'm just trying to figure out how to get things fixed. I don't want to take it away, because that's expensive, and I want to make my farm nice.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks, Brian. Oh, Counselor Bane has another question. Counselor Bane?
Brandon, are you there?
I can hear you.
No, no, sorry. I checked through the public first.
Yes, yes, I'm here. Yes, I'm here.
There's some reason, I'm bringing this again, I'm familiar with it. Why did we do a, because you didn't have a permit? Because you didn't have a permit?
I have a permit, I thought I had one, you guys kind of named it out, I don't know why, I'm on a landline, but what I'd like to do, I'm, I was hoping to be there in person, but with this, uh, environmental problem, we can't go because, uh, COVID, but I just want to make things right with you guys, I'm not here to fight you guys, I want to make it right. You know what I'm saying, guys, like, seriously, I'm not a bad guy.
Well, no, nobody's a kid who knew that, sir, I just, I'm asking the director, I just, why you wish a stop work order? So, if you don't like...
Uh, Counselor, Counselor Vane, if I can just interject, uh, there is a report, um, later in the, in the meeting, so, uh, I think that those, some of those questions will be addressed then, so...
Fair enough, thank you, thank you.
All right.
Hey, hey, Alderman, uh, Alderman, Mayor Jordan?
Yes, Brian.
Um, I want to work with you guys, I don't want to fight you guys, like, I dug up my ditch like I promised, I'm a man of my word, which means I told Martin Reed I'd dig up my ditch, I did. I built a berm, I got guys, work with me, they're going to make it right for you guys, we don't, we're not, I, I understand where you guys are from, I can understand, because I've been down the road, I go to Camp Road, I've seen some stuff in Lincoln, I see stuff in West Lincoln, I says, that's not good, that's just not right, you know what I'm saying? I know, I've studied berms, I looked at, uh, next door, we're reviewing all nice berms, but some trees on top looks nice. Yeah, I'm not taking, I'm not building a berm that's going to look ugly.
Yeah, uh, yeah, we, we understand that, and, uh, and we'll, we'll be talking further about this tonight, uh, with, with the report, so...
I, I understand, I'm not asking either, I did get a home today, and he said, I'm going to be with council, so you better, because you got to make things right, which means we want to make it work with these guys, because we don't want to fight you, I'm not leaving. You guys aren't leaving, so, I, and I like you guys, I really do, I think all you guys are great, I do, I take heart in you guys, I think you're a great council. I got another firm in Walton County, another good council, but some of these councils don't get along, but I like this area, it's, it's been working for me.
Great, well... Well, thank you very much for, for your delegation, and we will, uh...
I can say a few things. If you guys want, come over and see me sometime, you're all invited, I got my garage full for distancing, I'll tell you when I'm up to, I'm not going to hide, I'm not.
Yes, I, I think everyone on council knows where you live, so, um, so we know the location, so, uh, uh, we'll, uh, move through your delegation, again, thank you for, for talking tonight, and, uh, and we will certainly, um, be discussing this, uh, later in, in the meeting. All right, thank, thank you, Brian.
Hey, Jeff and Counselors, thank you for your time, okay?
Yeah, have a good evening, thank you.
You too, have a nice night.
Thank you, we just need a mover and seconder for, uh, uh, this resolution, or delegation. Counselor Vardy and Counselor Cadwell. Moved by Counselor Vardy, seconded by Counselor Cadwell, resolved that delegation from Bryant Drost, four forty-two Soby Road be received. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yes. Uh, Mayor Jordan, sorry to interrupt.
Sorry, uh, Counselor Cadwell, you have a question?
Thank you.
Uh, yes, if I may, Mayor Jordan, thank you. When we, uh, receive, when we go back to these reports, will the presenters be, uh, connected with us too?
No, the presenter won't be for this report.
Wow, that kind of... All right. I wish they were.
All right, I read the resolution, um, called for recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frank?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
No.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Vane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes, so that's carried. Up next, Charles now. Up next, I'd like to welcome, uh, Mr. Charles Harneck, uh, who has, uh, commentary on the integrity commissioner final reports tonight. Uh, welcome, Charles.
Thank you, your worship, and, um, thank you for the opportunity to be here, uh, I, I really, um, have, uh, very little to say, um, other than, uh, there are two matters of the matters that were tabled, um, with your agenda, where there were findings, um, and the findings are set out in those two reports. And, uh, my only comment is, I leave it, uh, to council, uh, I've given you my recommendations, and, um, it's now left to council to, uh, to deal with, um, uh, the penalty, uh, aspect, um, I have no, no further comments on that. There was one complaint that came to me, uh, that, uh, involved, um, uh, Counselor Ritchie and Counselor Vardy, um, and, uh, the parties have asked, uh, that that be withdrawn, uh, so that, uh, that complaint, um, uh, was, uh, resolved, uh, otherwise, and has been withdrawn. Um, and really, those, uh, those are my comments, um, and, um, I, I leave, uh, the matter of penalty, I've made my recommendations, I leave the matter of penalty to, uh, to council. And, uh, I look forward to, um, dealing with, um, other matters, I think, on the, uh, August agenda, uh, to deal with, uh, taking a look at the, um, uh, draft code of conduct that I provided you, uh, some months ago, um, and given COVID and other heavy agendas, uh, it has not been able to be, uh, to be dealt with, um, to now, and I, uh, understand from the clerk that that is, uh, uh, something that will likely be on your agenda in August, so I look forward to that.
Uh, thank you, Charles, uh, because the reports were only re, released today, I haven't even had a chance to look at them, quite honestly, uh, and, uh, uh, one thing, I know we did have contact before that we, and I feel we'd still like to schedule, um, some sort of, um, one-day mediation with council and yourself, I know we certainly talked about that, and I think it's a, a great way, uh, to move forward and, and, and to, um, just, uh, kind of iron things out and, uh, get us working together as a team that we need to be, uh...
I, I'm, I'm very happy to, um, I'm very happy to, uh, try and accommodate that, um, we, uh, I, I have, um, done some, uh, looking into that, and I think, um, the, uh, the best way to, to deal with that is, um, uh, on a looking-forward basis, uh, as, um, an education session.
Yeah, and, and that, of course, is, uh, a subject to approval by council, I'm not trying to do this myself, but, uh, I know we just had, uh, preliminary discussions, just to see, uh, how you felt about that, so...
And, and, um, you know, just, uh, my, my, my very preliminary opinion is that, um, it's, it's doable, uh, it's important to do it, uh, appropriately and properly. Um, so, if, uh, your worship, if you don't mind, I will give you, uh, or I will contact you, uh, and, um, we can, uh, we can, uh, sort of exchange some, some thoughts and, uh, um, leave it to you, uh, of course, to, um, speak with, uh, other members of council.
Uh, that, that sounds, that sounds like a, a good idea, and, and I look forward to that, uh, I guess we have a couple of questions from council now, uh, Counselor Vane, you have a question?
Uh, part of, well, it's a two-part thing, um, first of all, uh, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you saying the fact you're going to bring it to council, that kind of threw me a little bit there when you, uh, said that, and now, Mr. Harneck and I have discussed this option, and I, I, uh, I think it's great that he's willing to come in, uh, Mr. Harneck, I have a great deal of respect for you, as you know, we've already spoken. Um, the only thing I do want to add, Mr. Harneck, with all due respect, um, I'm a little concerned in my complaint, I sent an email on June the sixth, um, June the sixth, I believe it was, and, uh, offering further information in regards to the complaint I've given, and I received an email back on June the sixteenth from your assistant Zach, saying that you wouldn't be pursuing that information, and that was key to my complaint. I, I'm a little concerned with that, I, I realize you're done at this point, I'm just...
You know, I, I, just, um, you know, I think, and, and I don't, I don't want to refer to the facts or, or issues in any of the cases before me, but, you know, I, I think what, what ends up happening is, you, you, you have to have a process, I receive a claim, um, we send it to the, uh, uh, to the responding party, we get information from them, I share that with the complainant, um, and that kind of ends it. And the idea that you can keep filing and keep filing and keep filing months after, um, you know, it, it, it has to end somewhere. So, I think that we, we develop rules, and, 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 and I'm pretty lax about, um, about the rules, as long as everybody gets the same fair opportunity, and I made sure that that was the case. But at some point, you just have to, you have to draw a line and get the work done, and, you, you know, um, as people wanted to give me more and more and more material, eventually, you, you've, you've got to, you've got to say, look, we've got a process here, and we've got to, we've got to follow it, so, um, you know, and, and, and I, I don't, I don't say that with respect to your claim in particular, or, or your response in particular, I say that generally, uh, as, as to how I managed all of the claims. Um, and I wanted to make sure that no one had, um, any advantage over anyone else, everybody had the opportunity to, to, uh, present, to hear what the other side was saying, to rebut it. And at that point, you know, you really have to start to draw the line, or you'll never get these things completed.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yeah, thank you, your worship, to Mr. Harneck, uh, if, uh, in reading through some of these, if we had a question for you, is it okay to call you up and question something, and it's, it, it might not be a case that involves myself, for example, uh, but about somebody else's case, is that, is that appropriate? And then I have one other thing I want to ask.
In, um, it, it, the part of, part of the problem, part of the problem that I have, um, is that the legislation, uh, binds me to doing everything, um, in writing. So, if you are to, if, if you want, uh, to make an inquiry, um, or ask advice from me, um, or get an opinion from me about, about, uh, uh, you know, uh, whether you're, you're, um, in, you'd be in contravention of the, um, of the code of conduct or not, you've got to deliver that to me in writing. I have to deliver my answer to you in writing. Um, and that's what the, what the, uh, municipal act requires, uh, people to do, so...
Okay.
Um, private conversations around this, um, that are outside of an investigation, um, would not, you'd be walking a very fine line there.
Yeah, well, I thought I'd ask the question. Thank you, and, and could I put a motion on the floor to defer this, these, uh, matters to a, another time, uh, along with this training, so that, because as the mayor has already suggested, he hasn't had a chance to read much of it, neither have I, and I think we need some time to, to, to just, uh, do this, so, can I put a motion on the floor to defer this?
Um, can, can I, you know, my, my role in this, um, is, in, in terms of the, the complaints that are, are there now, is, is, um, is basically done. Um, and, and I think, um, you know, uh, in, in the areas where I've made a finding, I've made a recommendation, and I think it would be, uh, uh, up to council now to determine what it is you want to do, so, um...
I'm not, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't really, I, I, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Harneck, I wasn't asking, I just want to ask council, uh, since you're talking about penalties, I'd like to have some time to digest all this myself, before council decides to apply any penalties to anybody for anything, if you know what I mean, I'd like to defer.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, uh, I, I don't know, um, there are some questions on the floor still, uh, but I'm quite happy to have a motion to defer, but, uh, in the meantime, I, I think we should still be able to answer questions to people that, that are questioning right now.
Point of order, uh, a motion to defer has no discussion.
No, we're not discussing the motion to defer, we're just leaving, letting people speak, and then, and then not making any recommendations today.
As a mayor to the clerk, are, are we in a motion to defer?
Yeah, uh, everyone, everyone should, should be allowed, allowed one round of questioning, uh...
Point of order. Mayor Jordan, point of order.
Yes.
So, our procedural bylaw says that when there's a motion to defer, that there will be no discussion, and we will go immediately to the vote for a deferral. To the clerk, can she confirm?
Sure, uh, if, if that's a confirming, I'm happy to, to do that, and anyone who has questions can always, uh, write the, write Charles Harneck, uh, with those questions, uh...
Um, Mayor Jordan, can I do a friendly amendment to the motion?
Uh, sure, Counselor Sharp?
Um...
There's no amendments to a deferral, we have to vote on the deferral, can we have the clerk please rule on this?
Is there a date, a defer-to date?
Usually, when you defer to the next meeting.
Yes, that's, that's what I think a deferral is, to the next meeting.
It's a deferral to the next meeting.
Can I call the question?
So, if I can clarify, under the procedure, uh, motion to defer, there shouldn't be any, uh, discussion as to whether, uh, the deferral is allowed or not. Uh, once you pass this motion, uh, the discussion should end, so at least every council member who needs to ask a question or make a, a comment is allowed to speak at least once. I hope that clarifies.
Uh, thank, thank you, uh, Sarah, I think it does clarify, because I, I think the point is, you can't have a, a deferral motion staple debate, so, uh, Counselor Cadwell?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and through you to, uh, to Mr. Harneck, uh, I have a, just a question. Is he still there?
Sure.
Oh.
Sure.
Good evening, uh, yeah, and thank you for your work, and I, I'm just curious, through the process, uh, if there was any other people involved with the, uh, the complaints, were they interviewed at all, was there, like I'm saying, maybe if some staff was, uh, would have been, uh, involved, was there any interviews, uh, through your process?
Where I had, where I had to get clarification, I did seek clarification, um, but in most cases, it was not necessary.
Okay, okay, thank you very much, sir.
Given the nature of these complaints.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Counselor Ritchie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Harneck, I had the opportunity to read all the reports today, and, um, in reading them, there are some things that I didn't like to see. Um, my question is, though, your conclusion, uh, was, uh, possibility of no penalty on these things, do we as a council have to accept that, or can we appeal that, or what's our right?
You, it, I, I, I make a recommendation about penalty, it is a recommendation only, the determination is up to council.
Um, yeah, my question is, is where you've made a recommendation where no sanction be imposed?
Um, if I, if I found, uh, if I found that there was a breach of the code, and I recommended no sanction, um, that's my recommendation. Um, if council says we don't accept that recommendation, we think there should be, um, a different penalty, that's up to you.
And, and what about where you, um, ruled that there was no breach of the code of conduct? Yet, uh, you, you recommend counselors, uh, regard... Yet, you recommend counselors regard for their own bylaw?
Oh, I mean, I, that is not in the nature of a penalty. That's in the nature of, it's something folks should be aware of. So...
There'd be nothing we could do about that? Or is there something we could do about that?
No, that's my decision.
So there's nothing we can do about that?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Being the recipient of one of these Integrity Commissioner allegations and complaints, it's been an extremely stressful and trying six months of life going through this process. It tears you away from the important things that we need to do for the town. And it interferes with your family life and everything. It just kind of takes over. I really hope that, I appreciate Mr. Harnick's time and thoroughness in dealing with these numerous complaints. When I was looking up the region's independent external governance auditor, when they were going through that back, it's actually a report dated in 2019, they talk about the Code of Conduct there itself. The code has been weaponized in the sense that citizens and counselors with political views from particular counselors appear to complain too frequently to the Integrity Commissioner as a way of discrediting their political opponents. And I think that what we're seeing is something we have to really be conscious about. I just, that, as the mayor said, we can work towards a more cohesive team and not looking at, what is really important to the work that we need to do within the town. And having that mediation session, hopefully, once that comes to the table, I think is an excellent idea to help us all move forward from this and work together, because we need to do that for the community, for the citizens of Grimsby, and not continue to look at ways to, just, it's extremely disruptive to what we need to do for the town. And I'm hopeful that we can get past it and heal and move on and work strongly as a team, because I personally have found it one of the toughest things I've had to go through in my life to do this for six months. So I'm just, that's my experience. Really humbling, and I appreciate all the time, again, that Mr. Harnick put into it, but I don't wish it on anybody, because it's extremely draining personally. So thank you again very much. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vardy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Harnick. Maybe I would just like to say that I agree with Counselor Bothwell, and that maybe this is an opportunity for all of us to step back and see how we can focus on working together instead of, you know, further the divisiveness that's on council. And I hope that that's something that we can do. And it's my sincere hope, because all this negativity does not move the town forward. It does not serve our constituents. And as Counselor Bothwell said, you know, regardless of the complaints or no complaints, this is very, this is very, very trying, this kind of discord. And, you know, you enter the political realm to try and do some good, and then you find yourself, you know, fighting the lions. So I'd just like to put that out there.
Counselor Frake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Charles, thank you for coming out. I know it's been a long process, and you've had to deal with a lot of Grimsby issues, I should say. You recognize it in all the reports. Like I see that, you know, we do have a bit of a split on council, and I'd like to echo the thoughts and sentiments of Counselor Bothwell and as well as Counselor Vardy. We all want to get through another two and a half years. And somewhere along the line, we fell apart. And we need to find a way to get back together. I have no question about that. I don't know how we do it, but I think we all, I think, hopefully, when I speak for everybody, we all want to do this. We want to be able to go through the next two and a half years without all this stress and emotional upset, and get things done for the town, because that's why we were elected. I certainly am quite willing to put aside any of my issues and concerns that I might have had with anyone, to try and get this thing back on track. So hopefully, that when you do come back to see us in a mediation session, that we can get our act back together, because there's no question about it. We need to do that. We're elected officials. We represent the town, we represent the people, and we need to get on with the business of the town. So thank you for taking the time over the last number of months to go through the number of, you know, complaints that you had to deal with me and either either side of the coin, either against me or the other way around. Thank you, and thank you for coming out tonight, and hopefully, we will find a way forward. We do have two and a half years left, and it could be long, long years, or they could be very efficient, very effective years for us. So let's hopefully we can find a way through it. Thanks for coming out. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselor Sharp.
Could the mayor read a list of the complaints?
I don't even have it in front of me, so...
On the agenda?
They're just the numbers, or...
What's on, could you just read what's on the agenda for the complaints? Those people that don't have the agenda in front of them.
All right, I will read that. It's Report IC 1870320. Report IC 1880320. Report 1890320. Report IC 190320. Report IC 193320. Report IC 196320. Those are the, what's on the agenda. I don't have it on my agenda, so... What's the number? Report IC 211320. All right. Report, sorry, Report IC 201320. So that's the seventh one.
Do we have, can one of our staff, can we, do we know how much these reports cost?
Are you asking staff?
Yeah. Is there anyone on staff that knows, that can answer that?
Well, I'm not sure if Mr. Harnick has his final invoice in even.
No, I haven't. I, the billing is based on the time spent. And we have a contract, I guess, ADR Chambers has a contract with the town at a prescribed rate, and that will be the rate that is applied based on the number of hours that has been expended.
Can you estimate how many hours?
No, I can't. I have... I've kept a tally of it, but I haven't gone through it, nor have I completed it all. So I can't do that.
Then I would refer the question to staff. Is the CIO or the clerk, can anybody estimate how many hours? Or the cost, just a roughly amount?
The contract that you have stipulates, I believe, an hourly rate. And it'll be that rate times the number of hours that I've spent.
Thanks, Mr. Harnick. Through the mayor, to the CIO or the clerk, do we know about how many hours or about how much dollar value has been spent on these complaints? Even a ballpark, do we have a rough idea of how much money or time?
I don't see, oh, CIO Schlang. CIO Schlang, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Yes, Counselor Sharp, I could work with the clerk and the Integrity Commissioner to come up with those numbers for the next council meeting.
Okay. So my comment, and the reason that I was asking that is because I know there's been some money spent on this. And so I didn't make any complaints, and I wasn't found in breach of the Code of Conduct. And so, some of my colleagues talk about, you know, can't we all just get along? And I'm more than happy to get along with everybody. And I have, in my entire term as counselor, have always been following our Code of Conduct, and I take my job here seriously. But, so to the residents who are watching, and to my colleagues who are listening, I don't know the amount that we've spent, but this, there's an amount. Like, we're hiring Charles Harnick, who's like a lawyer and an integrity commissioner. Like, his hourly rate, I'm sure, is not an inexpensive number. And it's nothing against Mr. Harnick, but this little, what do I want to call it? This endeavor is costing the taxpayers money. And so I personally haven't taken part at all in this. And I think that we should stop completely. I think that we're all grownups. And that if you go through, there's six complaints in here, and Mayor Jordan didn't, he just read the IC number, 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 number. But there's complaints, and they're from counselor to counselor. We have six complaints on the table right now, and one or two that were like moderated or mediated and then dropped. But we have counselors complaining about counselors, right? And I'm the youngest on council, I'm 36 years old. We have people close to twice my age here that just can't get along with each other. And that inability to get along is costing the taxpayers, I presume, in the neighborhood of $350 an hour. Right? And I don't know that for sure, but I'm telling you that the next time that one of my colleagues feels the need to file a complaint, most of these complaints were found, not found, they were found to be not breaches of the Code of Conduct. It's, I have one and three-year-old kids, and like, they go to daycare, and they have friends, and we tell them, like, you know, don't...
Counselor Sharp, I think, we get your direction, and I'll just say I wasn't involved in any of these as well. So everyone has spoke once, so there is a motion on the table to...
Mayor Jordan, don't cut me off, please. I wasn't finished. You can't cut a person off. And you've done that to me before, Mayor Jordan, and you are not allowed to just step in and start speaking. So I'm still going here, and like, this is not appropriate. So I'm actually getting close to being done, but I get to have a closing statement. I don't get to have somebody just come up and speak over me, right? So like, I'm furious. You've done this to me three, four times. I'm speaking, the words are coming out of my mouth. I'm going to close with a thought, right? You know, the end of my speak. And you just start talking over me. You can't do that. You're the mayor.
Was that your closing, then? You're finished? And I apologize. I'll read the resolution. Moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselor Vane. Resolve that consideration of all Integrity Commissioner final reports be deferred to Monday, August 17th meeting. Recorded vote. Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frake?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
All right, slower. Yes.
Counselor Ritchie? Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Counselor Sharp? Counselor Sharp has given a thumbs up. Counselor Vane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I mean, yes, so that's carried. Thank you very much, Charles, for your time. And we look forward to, we look forward to communicating with you and organizing mediation as long as it's accepted by council. All right, thank you. Have a good evening, Charles.
Thank you very much.
Up next, we have memorandum. Speaking on this. Okay. Before I read the resolution, CIO Schlang is going to speak on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This was just an information report to council. It's about the corporate logo. Back in 2019, the Advent Finance Committee directed the corporate leadership team to look at it. There were some inconsistencies. This had been worked on since 2014, and when I arrived, I saw that we're using all sorts of different logos across internally, externally. And of course, this council was an accepting of the circle that had been worked on for a while. So we met as a CLT team, and we felt, you know, let's be consistent and use the crest across everything that we do, both our websites, all our letterheads. And in some cases, we engraved the town of Grimsby, because a lot of people didn't know that it was the town of Grimsby. So we've, as a CLT team, decided to move towards one way of branding right now through the crest and just a identifier with the town of Grimsby. And we thought we'd inform all of council, because, you know, we're going to change the websites, change some of our letterheads, and then at least we'll all be consistent across the corporation. We're not going to change existing business cards until they run out, because that's a cost we don't need to incur. But anybody that's run out, or new staff, will go to the common logo we selected. And this is a step to get common branding, at least for now. So thank you.
Thank you, CIO Schlang. Any questions from council? Counselor Cadwell.
Great, sorry. Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Jordan. And through you to our CIO. I like it, looks good. Was around in 2014, and we had a lot of discussion to it. And yeah, I think it's great, heading the town of Grimsby to the crest. I'm very impressed, and thank you very much, staff, to you, Harry, and your staff team for coming up with it. It's simple, it's not expensive, and it looks good. It's great. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, just need a mover and seconder for the resolution. Counselor Cadwell. Counselor Vane. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, seconded by Counselor Vane. Resolve that the memorandum with reference to the corporate logo be received for information. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frake?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Vane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I mean, yes, that's carried. The agenda's so long, I lose my place. Up next, we have the Grimsby Beach Study RFP update. Our CIO is going to speak on that. Harry? Our CIO is going to speak on that, Harry. Mr. Schlang?
Yes, I'll have Stephen maybe add a little bit to this, our treasurer. But we just wanted to give council a heads up so we don't have surprises later on. Right now, the RFP responses are coming in a little higher than what we budgeted. But we just wanted to give you a heads up. We feel we can account for it in the next future budget years. We'll be able to absorb that in '21, '22. But we just wanted to give you a heads up. We still have two suppliers that we'll be working with and still some, some room for negotiation. But we didn't want any surprises when we come to you or toward the contract. It is something we need to do and we're going forward. So just wanted to give you a heads up.
Great, thank you, CIO Schlang. Counselor Vane?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor, to CIO Schlang. Guys, now I'm doing it. The, you say it's higher than we budgeted and it's going to impact future budget years? Is that the, by how much? Because keeping in mind that approximately every hundred thousand that we go over is another percentage point.
Yeah, we, I'll have Steve clarify, but no, it, once it's built in the base, you know, we're going to be fine. It's not going to be an incremental increase in future years, Counselor Vane. Sorry if I wasn't clear on that. It'll be built in the base and we'll be able to cover it.
Thank you.
Yes, that's correct. Hundred thousand was budgeted in 2020 and that hundred thousand will be included in the base budget for 2021. So we should be, we should be fine with no extra impact on the 2021 levy.
Thank you, Mr. Greninger. Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan, sorry. And thanks for the report. And I, if I missed it, I apologize, apologize. I just have one question. Is there an approximate timeframe as to what? I see there's phase one to five. Do we have an approximate timeframe, how long this will take? And if I missed it, I apologize. Thank you.
Again, when we come to award the contract, we'll be able to define those times for you, Counselor. I mean, it needs to be a comprehensive. It's such a unique piece of our history and it needs to be done. So we'll make sure it's done right and we'll come up with timeframes for you once we award the contract.
Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you, worshiped through you to our CIO. I understand we have an interim control bylaw which expires within a year. So I thought we were going to complete this land use planning study within a year. And now it looks like we're going to take it into multiple years. So I just, where are we going with this now? Because I thought it was just a land use study so that we could get our heads around what people can and can't do in the Grimsby Beach area. And if we don't, I, I understand, I think we can extend the land use study, if I'm not mistaken, another year. But can I get some more information on this as how this is all gonna work?
Yes, so there's a couple of things that are in our favor on the timelines was the COVID. Gives us a little more time and, and we can always extend if needed. But again, when we award the contract, we'll have some tight timelines to, to provide to you and, and be sure that we meet all the requirements of the interim bylaw based on either an extension through the COVID or if we need to extend that bylaw for another year.
So what you're saying, the longer the pandemic, the longer we have? Yeah, no, that's, we don't want that either. But yeah, okay, so you're, you're, you're working towards that. I just thought this was going to take a year, that now we're looking at multiple years. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Ritchie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my, my question here, and I'm sure everyone would agree to me that this study is of importance, especially to Counselor Frake and I representing the ward. So I don't want anyone to take me the wrong way. But I do believe we passed a motion for $100,000 for the Grimsby Beach study. So I would think that if it's going to cost more, that we might have to do reconsider it to up the amount, to approve the RFP. And that's where I'm going at. And if that's what we're looking at, I think that we should be, if, if that's what we have to do, should be not be looking at putting that in sometime in the near future to, so it doesn't hinder or slow down the process. So I guess my question is to whoever, will we not need something to allow us to spend more money on that? As it would be well over the hundred thousand that we budgeted?
Yeah, Counselor Ritchie, when we actually go to award the RFP, that'll come to council for council approval. So you will be then approving the revised budget.
Thank you.
Counselor Sharp?
So through the mayor, if you just could confirm, so the original budget amount was $100,000? And, and the, what's the projected amount or the tendered amount?
The average tender right now is about $230,000.
So we budgeted about 100,000 or we budgeted 100,000?
That's correct.
The cost is coming in at 230,000?
Yeah, from what I understand, the scope of the, of the study was going to cost quite a bit more than the actual budget. The budget was an estimate by the planning department. And these studies are actually costing a lot more than, than what was initially considered. So when we do actually go to award the contract, when council awards the contract, they'll have an opportunity to look at the scope. They may decide to reduce the scope of the overall, the final study to reduce the cost. And we could work with the consultant to possibly do that or accept their recommendation as proposed.
So I'm just wondering, why is it so much, where's the, what caused the delta? Like, it's not just a little bit difference. It's like almost two and a half times more expensive. And.
I, I'm not familiar with the particulars. Maybe Mr. Basic can provide some particulars.
And again, as I said, counsel, we're still not in the final throes. If we're still down selecting suppliers, the price may come down. So I'm just, we just wanted to give you a heads up that this is the right.
And then what about, we, we projected two studies in our budget. We projected one for the Grimsby Beach at $100,000 and we projected one for Main Street East at $100,000. Are those numbers arbitrary and just like placeholders or are they real figures? And will the Grimsby, will the Main Street East study, will it cost $230,000 as well? Is someone, is anyone listening to me?
Through you, Mayor. Sorry, it was unmuted. We don't know on the East Main, we're going to be going out as I, as you, we identified in the COVID report that we'll be going out in Q4 RFP for that. And again, we'll see what the market tells us. But they weren't arbitrary, that, you know, we're trying to come up with some estimates that we felt were appropriate at the time.
So I don't know, it's like, it just seems like if we budgeted a much smaller amount and then, like if these two studies, which we budgeted $100,000 each for, come in at $450,000 or possibly more, maybe it's worth canceling one of them. Is that, is that a, is this an option that we have or?
The, the study for the Grimsby Beach can't be canceled because there's an interim control bylaw currently in, in effect.
So, so, so we've, we've put ourselves in a position where, where we under budgeted for an item and we now can't cancel it?
Through you, Mayor, again, we're still, we wanted to give you a heads up. We're in the final throes of going down to two suppliers. We felt it was important to advise you of this at this point. But we're still in the negotiation phase. We're hoping that that comes down. We will come to council with a full report on whether we could reduce the scope a little bit, not jeopardizing the interim control bylaw or, you know, advising council that we have to go the full, the full phase. So we'll be back to you. This was really a heads up, so there will be no surprises when we come back with the full RFP results.
So what I'm getting at here, and one thing I'm getting at, I don't know if, if you guys knew this, but I'm an estimator. I make budgets in my professional life. And like 15% delta, that's like pretty much the acceptable. 30% delta, if it's, if it's like a budget and you, you really don't know, like a rough budget. 130% more, it's like, I would be fired from my job if I, if I priced the job to say it would cost $100,000 and it costs $230,000. And so maybe we're, we're seeking the wrong consultants, maybe, maybe. I, I don't know what's going on here, but like this, we talked about fiscal responsibility and I'm not, I'm just not seeing that. So I, I can't, I can't wrap my, my head around that it can be this much more expensive. And, and it seems like maybe we have to cancel it. And if we do, can we just call off the interim control bylaw? Because the interim control bylaw, if, if someone could confirm, is, is only to, it's only in effect because we're doing this study. And so if we aren't doing the study, then the interim control bylaw is no.
Mayor, at this time, I wouldn't talk about that unless we went back into closed. I think it's just important that we wanted to give you a heads up. We've, it's an extensive study. The team worked with the Heritage Committee to try and get the scope of work. We've not, unlike some of the estimating that you do, we've not done something so extensive in the town. There's no sort of benchmark to look at, to see what maybe those costs would have come in at. So again, at this point, we need to continue with interim control bylaw. We're coming to you. We don't, when, when we come to you with our final report, we'll have some options that council consider at that time.
Thank you, CIO. Counselor Bothwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Just a comment on CIO Schlang's there where Heritage was not consulted on the terms of reference for this land study. Just so you know, we did not, not have any input in, at all into the terms of reference document or the scope of work. It kind of came as a bit of a surprise to the Heritage Committee as well because it came in with the interim control bylaw as well. But I'm hopeful, I, you know, I'm not too sure as well why the scope is so expensive in some of the phases. And I don't know if it might have something to do with some legal work that needs to be done with respect to the, the lots, the lot structure and, and that, which is a unique, which is different from the Main Street East situation. Grimsby Beach having some, some different interpretations of how the lot structure in the plan of subdivision and whatever are, are in place. So I'm looking forward to seeing a better, a bigger report as to how this, these RFPs were broken down and into how the consultants are costing their different phases to see where those impacts might be, as Counselor Sharp mentioned as well. Where are those significant differences from what planning had expected this type of a scope of work would, would cover? So I'm looking forward to that, some further information as to where that is. I also understand that the interim control bylaw, the, the minister just lifted the Restrictions on the Planning Act, June 22nd, I believe it was. So the period of COVID is extended for the first year of the interim control bylaw, I believe. And I'd asked Mr. Basic at one point and he confirmed that that was the case, that we could extend it. So I suspect that we'll have a little bit of leeway there. And then as, as you mentioned, we can go into the second year if we have to. And it looks like with the impacts that we're facing that we might have to do that regardless. But yeah, did you say, could you just confirm, please, CIO Schlang, if we're expecting something more to come at the August meeting on this? Or when is the next update?
We're targeting August, but we want to be sure we're complete and have a fulsome report for you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly like to echo Counselor Ritchie's thoughts. This is a very important study. I don't, I would never support not going ahead with it, even if we do have to spend extra money. My understanding on the, and I, I look forward to Mr. Schlang's report later as to what this cost will be. I understand that because it, the whole beach area is such a complicated area with the lots and the lot, the zoning and the bylaw and everything else in, in the whole beach area is so complicated. And some of the documentation and records go back 200 years or more. And my understanding, I think we're talking to one, I think it was Walter, I can't remember, is that it would take so much time to go through those documents to ensure that everything is correct and in, in the right place. And I think that's what added to the cost, Counselor Sharp, that I understand. So there's just going to be a consultants, hiring consultants to go through those documents and trying to find all of the right information. Whereas on Main Street, we don't have that problem. We don't have 200-year-old, you know, documents or records to go through. It's pretty straightforward. So that's my understanding. I, I believe that we should wait until we get the final numbers. But at the same time, it is an important study and I, I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't support not having it go through. I know in one of our reports coming up, we're going to see a surplus in, in funds in, in our, in our budget. So maybe we can take some of that and put it aside and, and put it against that particular study. So anyways, that's what you sense worth and I, and I look forward to hearing CIO Schlang's RFP report at the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Ritchie, did you speak on this one? I'm, I'm not sure. Okay, so Counselor Vardy and then we'll do Counselor Ritchie. Counselor Vardy?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that I think both studies are vitally important for the future of Grimsby and how we protect Grimsby for the future. And I would not want to ever consider forsaking one for the other because then you end up pitting, you know, one part of Grimsby against another. And that's just not, not a good thing to do.
Counselor Ritchie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a statement that I do believe that council allocated the $100,000 into the budget. I personally don't recall asking staff for an opinion on it. It was just something that we did. It was an arbitrary number. And that being said, there's, so there's no fault to put on any of staff as to why these costs are coming in. I agree with Counselor Frake that there's probably a lot more work to be done here than, than what we, that people actually thought. But I actually don't remember even asking staff for a, an estimate on what they would actually think this would be. I could be wrong, but I just wanted to put that out there because this, this, this under budgeted item, I think, is on us as a council, not on the staff. Thanks.
I, yes, thank you, Counselor Ritchie. I tend to agree with you on that, 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 that is where it was put. And we don't know if, if the situation throughout the world and Canada right now is causing quotes to come in at a different rate than they, they were. So we definitely have to do more research on this to see where we're at. And CIO Schlang is definitely on the right lines proposing we do that. Counselor Vane, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To follow up on a comment that Counselor Vardy just made, I was going to say this until prior to her saying what she said. I agree that we don't want to pit neighbor against neighbor, but at the same time, we have to be conscious of our tax dollars. As we know, we got a lot of emails and continue to get emails on various things. I think I would like to suggest that we put the Main Street study on hold until such time as we get the Grimsby Beach one. The Grimsby Beach one obviously is very important. As Counselor Frake said, the records there are old, the, the history there is just, it's absolutely fantastic, the more I reach about it. So just from a budgetary point of view, I'm, all I'm suggesting is we put the Main Street one on hold. That's all I'm suggesting, not getting rid of it, just suggesting it because that's $100,000, we budgeted for that as well. And we know the pushback that we got on this year. And we know the pushback uh, that we got on this year. If we start increasing taxes and you're gonna have more than just a couple of neighbors against a couple of neighbors, you're gonna have a town in an uproar if we come in with a high tax rate again. That's my opinion, that's all.
Thank you, Counselor Vane. Um Counselor Frick.
Yeah, I just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to endorse what 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 Counselor Richie said. He is correct. We we picked that number when we were going through the budget. If I remember correctly, I think originally it was at a hundred and fifty thousand. And while we were trying to cut budget, we took a fifty grand out and asked the staff to go and try and work around that number. If I if I think think I'm incorrect in saying that, and Counselor Richie can correct me if I'm wrong. But I think that's where it was, and I think both studies had a hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark on it. And maybe maybe Harry can confirm that too, and we pulled it back to get some money out of the budget. And maybe we shouldn't have done that, but because I think we were just stabbing in the dark, we didn't know where we were going. And we just arbitrarily did pick a number, and two numbers in this case. I I agree with with Counselor Vardy uh, and somewhat with Counselor Vane, but we we cannot uh you know, trade one of these studies off against the other. I I think we need, I think the town in general wants us to do this. Uh, we do, as I said earlier, there is some surplus money coming up. Hopefully, we can use some of that with the in these studies. Um, these, these are surplus numbers that we probably was probably including last year's taxes anyways. So uh, anyways, um yeah, we need to go ahead with both these studies and and I and uh, and once again, I just look forward to to uh, Mr. Slange's updates in the next meeting. Thank you.
Perfect. Uh, Counselor, C O Schlang.
Yeah, just to Counselor Vane's, just to Counselor Vane's comment, Mayor, we have put as I said before, because we had to delay some of these studies, we have put um we're not looking at the East Main until Q four, so we'll have plenty of time to see how this is coming in before we uh, do the RFP on the second one.
Great, thank you. And and I do believe that the RFP uh, for uh, the the Grimsby Beach uh, study wasn't actually developed until after the budget, so uh so that's, that's certainly one reason why we uh, may have an overrun. Uh, because it really isn't. Uh, Counselor Sharp.
Uh, through the mayor to uh, the treasurer. Can you confirm whether in our budget we had in the draft budget that we had a hundred thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand for each of those studies? And um, in my recollection, it was always a hundred thousand. Uh, to the treasurer.
Yeah, um, I can't confirm right now. I can look back at previous drafts of the budget just to just to ensure if I and I I can report back to you.
Yeah, so the way I remembered, that it was a hundred thousand dollars and um so now it's two hundred and thirty thousand. And like that, so that's up in to the treasurer, how much was our contribution to the hospital this year?
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand? And how much was our, our our budget amount for transit?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so uh, I don't know, count my colleague says that it was a hundred and fifty thousand, but I don't recall that. It was a hundred thousand. And um, either way, uh, that our our budget should be um, drafted by staff and not picked arbitrarily. And I I don't have any recollection of arbitrarily picking numbers. I remember those numbers being in the draft. So I I'm not picking on anybody, but these, this is the facts. So I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, I see everyone um, has had uh, at least one go around on questions. Uh, we need a mover and seconder to receive this. Moved by Counselor Frick, second by Counselor Richie. Moved by Counselor Frick, second by Counselor Richie, result that the memorandum with reference to the Grimsby Beach Study RFP update be received for information. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell.
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall.
Yes.
Counselor Frick. Counselor Frick.
Yes.
Counselor, yep, Counselor Cadwell.
Yes.
Counselor Richie.
Yes.
Counselor Sharp.
Yes.
Counselor Vane.
Yes.
Counselor Vardy.
Yes.
Myself, I mean, yes, that's carried. And up next, we're going to uh, allow Regional Counselor Furtick to uh, speak. Counselor Furtick, welcome.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Jordan. I'm glad to see all the smiling faces tonight. Um, having said that, I'm gonna be very brief. I see you've got a pretty extended uh, agenda here. Um, the first thing I'm gonna tell you is that finally the region has uh, come through legally and transferred the North Service Road to Grimsby. Um, I guess there was quite a few complications, and I don't know exactly where it was, but uh, we got a report from Public Works saying that in fact it has been trans The most important issue I believe that I'm bringing to you is that the region is launching the inter municipal transit on August the seventeenth. Um, they are diligently working to get out the information to the municipalities. So Pelham um and Grimsby are going to be uh, and and Lincoln are going to be connected to the inter municipal transit. So there's where your two hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh, that somebody just asked about a a few minutes ago. Um, that's where it's going, and uh, it's now it's starting to come through. So we're all happy about that and all excited too. So um it's uh, it it's gonna be fabulous uh, for all of the region, because now we're gonna be able to go from uh, here to Beamsville and whatnot. Um, and uh, it's through the inter municipal transit. So anyway, um, look forward to bringing um, more information, and when I get it, I'll be sending it and emailing it to you. So that's my uh, that's my report. Uh uh, Mayor Jordan and counsel, and uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Furtick. I see we have some questions for you. Uh, Counselor Bothwell.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I was just reading the documents that um, Regional Counselor Furtick is referring to from the July fourteenth um, Public Works Committee meeting at the region, and um, there was a number of of actions they did. Um, the one he's referring to about the North Service Road um, encompasses uh, quite a span that was not um, legally transferred over to the town, all the way from the from the border with uh, Stony Creek. Um, and then through the new uh Main Street uh, just around the place Paul, uh, Place Polonaise area, and then it curves along and um takes over the North Service Road where the Casablanca Beach and the Fifth Wheel are. Um, that was part of the uh, the the questionable um, ownership that came up as well with the Casablanca parcel in the Northeast quadrant. So the thing about this report, um, Counselor Furtick, is it says that um, the actions they took, um, in order to finalize the intended transfer of title in the Land Registry Office, as requested by the Town of Grimsby, the bylaw attached has been prepared to reflect the acceptable description. So I'm expecting that. Um will still take a bit of time um, for some legal maneuvers to go through the Land Title Registry Office and finalize those documents. Um, the other thing they did at the same meeting, and I think you you probably read this one too, Counselor Furtick, was the um, uploading of the section of Livingston Avenue from Casablanca to the west side of Emily Street, because the right of way through the Woodlot and the rest of it um, was already under the ownership of the region, but the small portion from Casablanca to the west side of Emily um, that it currently exists was not transferred um uh to the region. And now they're part of the actions that we're doing is it looks like they're moving it uh under regional control from the town. So um, is that your understanding as well, uh, Counselor Furtick?
Uh, through you, uh, Mayor Jordan, to Counselor Bothwell. That's correct. And if you, if you realize that from Casablanca to Emily Street is the municipal uh, responsibility. The reason the region is doing that is because of the ghost station, which is going to be just south of that. So um, there has to be direct access to the ghost station parking lot and the ghost station. So that's why they have transferred that portion of Livingston Avenue. So um, and I don't have a problem with that. Um, I think it's uh uh, it has to happen, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Counselor Sharp.
Through the mayor to Counselor Furtick. Will this transit also be in Grimsby to Grimsby, or is it just inter municipal transit?
Through you, Mayor, to uh, Counselor Sharp. It's inter municipal and intra. So it's both. And um, the fares are fairly cheap, actually. Um I believe the inter municipal uh, fare is like six bucks. And the um, I guess you better, I I better not quote the inter in intra, because I think it's about three or four dollars. It's not very expensive, so.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think it's three dollars within Grimsby, and I think it's six dollars to get to another location like and I I think it'll take you as far as
St. Catharines.
Yeah.
Yep.
Which is great, because if you have like kids that are going to um, I mean, not kids, teenagers that are going to the mall or the movies. I mean, I know I'm not going to the mall or the movies right now, but it's a great way to get people around.
Brock University.
Yeah, you could take, can you take it straight to Brock?
Yep, you can. You you pick it up in uh, St. Catharines and do the transfer.
Yeah, that's um that gives an eighteen year old kid in his first year an easy way to get home for a free dinner when he's uh, spending all his money on university residence. Anyhow, thank you, Counselor Furtick.
You're welcome.
Uh, just a clarification for council. There is a report on the transit coming up later in the meeting, so Counselor Cadwell.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Jordan. Through you to uh, Regional Counselor Furtick. Just a couple of questions, just looking for updates. Had a ton of emails, calls about the medical mask or mask that are the proposal that uh, if you could give us a close notes versions of of the meeting that was two weeks ago and the meeting that uh, that will be on the twenty third. And a lot of people asking uh, what's Grimsby's position, so obviously waiting for the region, if you could give a bit of an update on that. Also, uh, tons of complaints about the self-service road construction. Any updates uh, from the region to uh assess when things might be in put in better shape on the self-service road. Appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Uh, through you, Mayor Jordan, to Counselor Cadwell. Um the self-service road, I am, I'm not up to date on it simply because um that that uh, the contract started quite a while ago, and it's been going on for quite a while, I believe. For some reason or other, I think it's not finished till about September or October, but I could be wrong. So maybe I shouldn't have said that, but I can check that in into that for you. Um, as far as the masks are concerned, this, stay tuned, because this Thursday it's on our agenda to deal with the masks and our face coverings. Um, it's been very controversial. Um, I'm sure that Mayor Jordan has been getting as many emails as I've been getting. Um, sometimes uh, ten and twelve a day. And um, there's, it's quite controversial on both sides. So all I can say is stay tuned. Um, uh, it's gonna go to the region on Thursday. Um, and of course, you know that we're now going into uh, category three from two. Um, which is a good thing. So let's not spoil it, please. I beg you all to make sure, and I'm a firm believer of wearing a mask simply because there is, there's good, there's good about it. So anyway, um, I hope that satisfies um, your concerns.
Yeah, thanks very much, uh, Counselor, and uh, I guess if uh, if the vote goes way that we don't want, that personally that I don't want it to go. Is there an appeal process to that at all uh, through the region? For the Town of Grimsby or any other municipalities? Where Niagara on the Lake, the city of St. Catharines, uh, there are some municipalities that have done it on their own. And I, for my own personal thoughts to it, I think waiting to see what the region how you folks vote on Thursday is important and the right thing to do, but uh, are you aware, is there an appeal process to, if it does? Go self, don't call. Uh thank you.
I guess uh, through you, Mayor Jordan, to uh, Counselor Cadwell. I I guess if you're going to um you're either for it or you're against it. The the appeal process is through council. And you're gonna have to have two thirds majority to bring it back to the table to discuss it, and that's the only way that you could get rid of it, whatever way the decision goes. So that's, that's my understanding anyway. There's no appeal process. You know what? The Department of Health is there for a reason, and and that's who we listen to. And that's why we've been listening to Tam, Dr. Tam, and everybody else. Um, I think you can draw your your own conclusions. And you, being a fireman, would most likely have to consider that any protection that you can take, you would want to take that. So anyway, um, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do support the mask.
Thank you, Counselor Vane.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to um, Regional Counselor Furtick. Um Counselor, the uh, you talk about the uh, intra-transit starting in August, which I think is absolutely fantastic. I'm glad to hear you're on board with the masks, but my specific question is in regards to the transit uh, in Toronto, let's say, which has a huge transit system and other major cities, they have regular cleanings of their vehicles to ensure that COVID isn't being spread through the vehicles. Have we got a procedure in place to ensure, because these vehicles are uh, smaller vehicles, and we'll be doing a lot of traveling back and forth? Have we got anything in place to ensure we're keep keeping them clean and keeping them disinfected? Are you aware of anything?
Uh, through you, Mayor Jordan, to Counselor Vane, yes, uh, they are taking all of the uh, protection that that's required. Um, and part of the presentation that we have had is that uh, of course they will, you know. They have to. They have to. The the contractor will have to deal with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Furtick, uh, seeing no further questions. Uh uh, have a good evening. Uh, there's no need for you to stay any longer unless unless you just want to. Um, up now, we have uh, first of our several reports. Report B L D G twenty dash zero one two seventy Hunter Road, uh, thirty four West, that's the U N A. Uh, and we had the the delegation tonight, uh and the report is going to be given by Paul Nickerson. Paul, welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I'm not able to uh, show my video, but I hope you can all hear me. Okay, uh, again, thank you for allowing me to present this report. Um, I'll be recapping some of the items that uh, Mr. Johnston had spoke about earlier during his presentation. There we go. So our signed by law ninety seven forty five allows for a maximum pole sign size of two hundred and fifteen square feet. The applicant is proposing three hundred and sixty two square feet. So an M T O approval, as well as a regional approval, has already been received by the applicant and submitted to the town. The proposed sign will be in proportion to the existing building and is as of similar sizes to nearby signs on adjacent properties. Our sign by law allows council to grant variances to the provisions of the sign by law. So as staff, we are recommending that this So as staff, we are recommending that this variance be approved to allow for a three hundred and sixty-two square foot sign at two hundred, or at two seventy Hunter Road. Thank you, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Council questions? Counselor Bothwell.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson, for the, for the report and the presentation earlier. That was very helpful and understanding. The only question I have is you mentioned that it's very similar to nearby signs, so just wonder what, which you're comparing them to, is that I'm expecting, I think you mean the, maybe the car dealerships. And then the next question is, it's, this is, this is, the sign is changing and that it's now going to be an electronic sign with LED lights and illumination. I just wondered if there's any type of, I think the ministry might have touched on this, but with respect to the the level of lumens or illumination and distraction from the highway and people driving by because of how bright it is. I just know that when I drive along the QE through Stony Creek, there's that one really big one there in front of the the industrial buildings on the South Service Road and you can't help but have a quick glance over at it. I just wondered whether there's parameters on the lumens and the lighting that's emitted from this sign.
Okay, through, through Mayor Jordan to Counselor Bothwell. As far as adjacent signs down at the, at the gateway, there's two particular signs. The one I believe did have a variance a number of years ago, the main sign that's advertising most of the businesses within the gateway. And there's also a Tim Horton sign that is, is quite large. The car dealers do have significant sized signs as well. Maybe not quite as big as this one, but those are sort of the ones in the general vicinity that are of a similar size. As far as the illumination goes, our signed bylaw does allow electronic signs with with lighting. It doesn't talk about illumination. I know the the MTO permit does specifically talk about that. And not exactly sure what the brightness allowed by the MTO is, but typically they would they would do an inspection as well once the sign's up to make sure it conforms with their requirements.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Sharp.
Through the mayor to Mr. Nickerson. I'm looking at the, the MTO permit right now. And on there, it says that no flashing. So first, this is a video sign we're talking about. Is that, is that like a big TV on there? Can you just confirm that?
It is a electronic sign.
So then, it says no flashing or intermittent or actuated lighting of any kind. And it says no electronic messages are allowed. And it says no third-party advertising is permitted. Can we capture some of these in, in our variance or how is this going to be allowed? Because how are we going to enforce the no third-party advertising?
Through you, Mayor Jordan, to Counselor Sharp. That's something that, again, like it's book of earlier, the, the Ministry of Transportation, they, they're also the regular, regulatory authority, so I would assume that they may keep an eye on such things to make sure it conforms with their bylaw. We certainly do as well. So once the sign's installed, that's something that we'll monitor being a digital sign, just to make sure that no third-party advertising is, is shown on there.
Because as you can understand, there, there could be some advertising that is not becoming necessarily, not saying that they would or wouldn't, but and obviously the permit doesn't allow it, and so is there any way that we can reference, can we attach this permit to the variance so that in the future, if we're having complaints about that, that we could, we can make reference to this, to this MTO permit?
Through you, Mayor Jordan, to Counselor Sharp. Certainly we will. As part of the package that we return to the applicant, we give them a copy of the review drawings along with a copy of our signed bylaw and the Ministry of Transportation permit that they received.
I mean, for, for residents and for, for counselors in the future, if, if there becomes complaints, I'm not saying there will be, but if, if there comes question about this, can we, can we attach this original MTO permit to our variance and can we include something that would say that it's approved subject to the conditions on the MTO permit? Or the Highway Corridor Management Permit?
Through you, Mayor Jordan. I guess we'll, we'll do that, Counselor Sharp. Not a problem.
Yeah, thanks very much, Mr. Nickerson.
You're welcome.
Counselor Cadwell.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Jordan. Through you to Mr. Nickerson. The sign, again, we had documentation, pictures and that. I'm just trying to get a bit of a visual. Would that sign be somewhat the similar size as the Sunrise Spa sign, which is just on the self-service road before Roberts Road? Mr. Nickerson? Can you, is there any, is there any size comparison to, to what's being proposed by the, by the Leuna from Hunter Road?
Through you, Mayor Jordan, to Counselor Cadwell. Yes, it's, it would be similar size. Could also compare it to similar size at the old Shell Station downtown. There's that billboard that has advertising on it, so that's roughly a ten-foot high by twenty-foot wide sign. That's the, the electronic portion of this. The variance is actually to allow the additional size, which is their, their, their name across the top and the, and the word training on the bottom. So that's the extra above and beyond the, kind of the main size of a, of a two hundred square foot sign.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Nickerson, sorry. I think it's great that we're doing this because just a quick little history story here, so to speak, that through GDAC, when we had our first meeting, we had businesses, it was a luncheon. We had businesses, presidents of companies and as speakers and, and their, their importance, what they stated was location on the QEW, being able to advertise on the QEW just encompasses such a large market, so I'm, I'm happy to see your report and I support it and thank you very much.
Counselor Bothwell.
Sorry, just one quick add-on. Counselor Sharp made me think of something else. I agree, it's a great, I want to support Leuna. I think it's an awesome thing. They also own the property, the old Westbrook at the front of the service road, and they've leased that out from what I understand to Province Brands, which is looking at doing hemp-infused beer or whatever. When we talk about a third-party advertiser, would they be deemed a third-party advertiser or not?
Through you, Counselor, or through Mayor Jordan, Counselor Bothwell, so this, this sign would be strictly for the Leuna property. There would be allowances for the other business to potentially put up wall signs and additional ground signs provided they conform with the MTO and our town requirements.
I just, I just thought there might be a conflict there because it's right on the corner of where Province Brands is, and if they choose the marketing of their own, I just wondered if they're going to be trying to piggyback onto that electronic sign rather than more sign, trying to get another sign within a very close distance to that existing one.
Through you, Mayor Jordan, to Counselor Bothwell. Again, that's something that we'll just have to monitor as, as those properties develop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Sharp.
Through the mayor, I was kind of leading towards that same thing, but while I was thinking through this, they are going to have the Leuna logo and name right on the top and training underneath. And Leuna being like a, a union and having a, a training presence there. I, I feel like that they can, that they're gonna moderate what they put on there. They're not gonna necessarily want to be, to be associated with a training center, the Leuna Union, International Laborers, whatever it stands for, I forget. I think that they would, on their own, want to, want to, want to not be attached to advertising that, that could be, that could look negative. So I think that I'm happy to have them there and I'm happy to have them have a sign up. And, and I was leading towards, towards that with the Province Brands, but I feel like that the Leuna wouldn't support that type of message on there, underneath their name. It just reassures me. That's it.
All right, seeing no further questions, thank you, Paul, for your report. We need a mover and a seconder for the report. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, second by Counselor Bane. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, second by Counselor Bane. Resolve that report BLDG twenty dash zero one dated July twentieth, twenty twenty be received and that thirty-four West Avenue North Hamilton Incorporated be granted a signed bylaw variance in order to permit a three hundred and sixty-two square foot pole sign. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frake?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Bane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes. That's carried.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan.
Up next, we have, thanks, Paul. Up next, we have report ITSI twenty dash zero one Fiber Services Contract Renewal. Philip will be speaking on this. Welcome, Philip. Nice to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nice to see you, Town Council. It's been a while. I hope everybody's keeping well and being safe. Thank you for having me on your very long agenda tonight. I'm here to present the renewal of the town's fiber services contract report before you. As per the report, our fiber service is provided by NRBN to a number of town facilities, not all, but a number of them. The recommended contract enhances fiber services to a number of our facilities, including Fire Station Two on the mountain and the Grimsby Public Library, so we're getting enhanced services. Also, there's enhancement for the entire town. The new contract that's recommended provides enhanced internet bandwidth for all town locations. One hundred and fifty percent increase in our bandwidth capacity. The recommended contract does slightly increase our costs, very slightly, from just under forty-nine thousand dollars a year to just over forty-nine thousand dollars a year. These costs are going to be absorbed in the ITSI operating budget, so there's no levy impact. I'd like to thank our network administrator and NRBN for all their work over the last couple of months to get this contract renewal before you. And I'd be happy, Mr. Mayor, to take any questions that you have or from Town Council.
Thank you, Philip. I, I just wish that we were still twenty-five percent owner of of this internet company. Counselor Cadwell. Oh, sorry. Counselor Cadwell, yeah, you're up.
Go ahead. Hit the wrong button.
That's okay.
Yeah, thanks for the report, Philip. Again, I'm just curious, when I was reading, reading through the report, is this have anything to do with our, the server? You mentioned it's reliable, high-speed. Is it 5G? I mean, you're getting this from the dinosaur, but is that part of the contract, we're now within getting 5G or, if you could just give me a bit of a close notes version on that, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely, Counselor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Counselor. No, this does not have to do with cellular coverage, which is wireless. This is fixed fiber service, so we actually have cables, fiber cables running through the ground into each of the facilities mentioned in the report. It does not have to do with cellular coverage. This is optical service, just over fiber.
Thank you for the clarification.
No problem.
Counselor Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Philip, how are you, Philip?
I'm good, I'm good. I've been better. Had a little bike accident this weekend, but I'm good.
I, I, I'm hearing your speech, you having some difficulty there, so I won't ask too many difficult questions. Anyway, but I just want to, want to know, when does this come into effect or is it already in effect?
No, it's not in effect. We need council's approval for it to go into effect. We were on a five-year contract started in February of twenty fifteen. A number of sites have been added. Since April, we've been on month to month. So the, the contract only goes into effect with council's approval on a five-year term.
Okay, and it'll be a five-year term?
Correct.
From, from tonight if we approve it or what is that? I mean, when, when do you turn it on?
We're currently leveraging their services. The enhancements will get turned on, I would anticipate, over the next four to six weeks as we work with NRBN to upgrade the service to the sites.
So we'll, so we'll all see great changes in our downloads and uploads from home?
This does come with an increase to internet service, so yes, we would see an enhancement. We were currently almost at capacity, so this is about building over the next five years.
That's great news, and listen, thank you very much for bringing it forward to us and thanks for the hard work. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Philip.
Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. Seeing no further questions, just need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Sharp. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Sharp. Resolve that report ITSI twenty dash zero one Fiber Services Contract Renewal dated July twenty, twenty twenty be received and the mayor and town clerk be authorized to sign the agreement with the Niagara Regional Broadband Network NRBN for fiber connectivity services for the Corporation of the Town of Grimsby for a period of five years at an annual cost of forty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and sixteen cents be approved. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frake?
Definitely, yes.
Counselor Cadwell? Counselor Cadwell gave a thumbs up. Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Bane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes. That's carried.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. Take care, be safe.
Yes, thank you, Philip. Heal now. Up next, we have report DPW twenty dash seventeen Municipal Access Amending Agreement with Niagara Regional. Oh, sorry, I just read that one. Or is that it? Is that the next one? See, all right. Report DPW twenty seventeen Municipal Access Amending Agreement with Niagara Regional Broadband Network Limited. Brandon, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is, not to confuse you, this is another agreement with the NRBN. So this report is to get authorization to execute the agreement with the NRBN network to allow them to continue to have their services placed on municipal road allowance. That's the fiber outlets. So in this case, this is to actually allow them to have their services on power lines and underground within our road allowance area. So the new agreement has a ten-year lifespan and the staff have reviewed the agreement and are recommending its renewal. Any questions?
Great, thank you, Brandon. Any questions from council? Seeing none. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Frake, Counselor Ritchie. Moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Ritchie. Resolve that report DPW twenty dash seventeen dated July twentieth, twenty twenty regarding Municipal Access Amending Agreement with Niagara Regional Broadband Network Limited be received and the Town of Grimsby entered into an extension agreement with Niagara Regional Broadband Network Limited and the mayor and the town clerk be authorized to execute the agreement. Again, recorded vote, Council- Again, recorded vote councillor Bothwell?
Yes.
Councillor Dunstall?
Yes.
Councillor Frake?
Yes.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yes.
Councillor Ritchie?
Yes.
Councillor Sharp?
Yes.
Councillor Vane?
Yes.
Councillor Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes. That's carried. Report DPW twenty dash eighteen Gibson Street Bridge Engineering Design for Bridge Replacement. Again, Brandon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so the purpose of this report is to get authorization uh from council to retain the services of Ellis Engineering To facilitate the design of a replacement bridge on Gibson Street. Uh, so we outlined in the report, we provided some of the background and the existing bridge, the town's inspection process and the reasons for closing the bridge uh when we did. Uh, we are recommending that we retain Ellis Engineering at a cost of twenty-two thousand dollars in twenty twenty To facilitate the design this year uh for replacement early in twenty twenty-one, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Brandon. Seeing no questions, uh, it's nice that we're moving forward on this, uh, or possibly. Oh, questions, councillor Cadwell?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and uh, thanks for the report, Brandon. Uh, a while ago, uh, councillor Ritchie and myself met with a couple of local residents at the bridge and uh Got quite a history lesson um on the bridge. So it was brought uh discussion with the residents was what what are the plans for the existing structure Of the bridge at the forty now? And one of the gentlemen thought, is it possible, Brandon, that that bridge Could be used as a replacement bridge for the the wooden bridge that's at the forty? Uh, the the, sorry, the wooden bridge, you know, with the pathway from the bowling alley that takes you that we've had to close that one off. Could the structure of that bridge be used uh in that location with probably some modifications to uh to support in that? Uh, yeah, because apparently the the bridge itself is 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 in good shape. Is that my understanding? Uh, Brandon, thank you.
So uh, yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, to uh councillor Cadwell. So there'd be a couple of issues with that. Uh, first of all, that the bridge itself, the existing bridge is designed for a certain span length. So the, in order for us to reuse it at another location, you'd have to have the a similar span with, I don't believe the wood bridge is is a similar span, but I don't have that detail. Um, in terms of the condition of the bridge, uh, so the base of the bridge, so underneath where the wood planks are Is where we're seeing some severe uh corrosion, uh, actually resulting in section loss. So it it came to the point where Uh, we, the engineer had recommended that we close the bridge uh due to safety concerns. So Uh, in order to, again, reuse that, we would have to rehabilitate it to a point where it's reusable. Um, for the initial estimates from our consultant was uh that uh it's far more cost effective To purchase and and install a new bridge than it is try to try to rehab an existing structure, uh, you know, that's thirty years old. So um, those are kind of the two, uh, I guess stumbling blocks, who would say with uh with that proposal.
Yeah, thank you, uh, through you, uh, through the mayor, through Mayor Jordan, to you, Brandon. Thank you. Yeah, because we do have another bridge that we have to look at, uh, some maybe in the future, it's council's Will of council to replace. So uh, I thought when the gentleman brought that idea forward, I thought, uh, You know, and he mentioned how these companies, they just they can cut a bridge in half. They can ship it down and they can structurally re rebuild it too. So I just thought, you know what? Uh, would there be some savings there? Because we are, again, not to be stuck on repeat here, but looking at The possibility of replacing two bridges too. So uh, yeah, I just, I just found that an interesting idea, especially uh This gentleman worked in steel fabricating. He's got a, that's his, that was his uh, his workplace and uh, yeah. But anyway, I just want to put that out. Also, with the the funding, you mentioned looking at hopefully some grants and that. What about partnerships? Uh, and I, just one comes to mind, where uh, where the DeSantis family Built a bridge that's down on the waterfront trail, and maybe we could look at if any, if there's any interest For partnerships to help say, help the cost of replacing that bridge too. So, yeah. Anyways, just throwing a couple ideas out, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cadwell. Councillor Sharp?
To the mayor, uh, that's an interesting idea, the sponsorship idea. If we could find someone to sponsor the bridge, You could call it Dave Sharp Bridge, or you could call it um I don't know, McDonald's Bridge, or maybe um local real estate agent, or somebody might uh Want to chip in, although it's an expensive bridge, but um So I looked at the report and it seems like the cost in twenty twenty-one is around, or the cost in twenty twenty is around twenty-two thousand And it's described as engineering cost. Does that include fabrication? Or is, so before I, before you answer, I saw that it was like twenty-two thousand In the engineering cost, and then it was about nine thousand in the um What seemed like construction costs. So does that engineering cost include fabrication, or is that just designed for twenty-two thousand?
So so through you, Mr. Mayor, the uh, so the total cost uh that we would be paying to Ellis Engineering is thirty-two thousand Nine hundred and fifteen dollars excluding HST. The twenty thousand that I had mentioned uh was was to deal with the design Uh, portion of that. So that would, they don't fabricate the uh, the actual bridge. They come in and they do the design. They do a topo survey of both bank and bankments. They uh, prepare the um, a design of the foundation or the footings that the bridge will sit on. They're going to look at, help us look at options in terms of uh, style of the bridge, material of the bridge, um Uh, widths, um, AODA compliance, all that kind of stuff. Uh, the additional money that would be paid to Ellis would be the, for the contract administration. So when the uh, we, uh, next year, uh, if everything goes as planned, we'd hire a contractor or we put the project out to tender, hire a contractor. Uh, so Ellis Engineering would be responsible for assisting us with inspection and putting together that tender document. Uh, very similar to what we do for other capital projects, uh, for example, water, I mean, and and another projects like that.
Okay, so if I'm, you kind of lost me a bit here. So the twenty thousand is is for design of the bridge and then the the ten thousand Or twelve thousand is for, what, does does that thirty-two thousand dollars total cost include the bridge?
No, the the, that's the design cost and the contract administration cost. The entire cost for the bridge, uh, the whole project altogether, we're estimating somewhere between Three and four hundred thousand dollars. So that includes fabrication, uh, any geotechnical investigation, uh, any permits Um, uh, and 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 incidental uh costs associated with that. So, oh, so what what we're asking for today is for approval to proceed with the design uh through Ellis Engineering. Uh, again, this would be twenty twenty cost, so this is impact to this current year's budget. Uh, going forward in twenty twenty-one, we'd be coming back to council as part of the uh, our regular budget process next year Uh, indicating, uh, you know, a better idea of what the total co- cost of the project would be, including fabrication, installation, uh, basically an all-in cost.
So the total cost of replacing this bridge is between three to four hundred thousand dollars?
Correct.
I'm in the wrong line of work. It's a Man, bridge making. Okay, when when will that, where will we get the three hundred or four hundred thousand dollars from?
So I, as, sorry, again, through you, Mr. Mayor. So as outlined in the report, we had talked about, there's a number of funding sources that that could be available. Uh, we believe that the uh, bridge, this type of project would be eligible for the OCIF funds Uh, as well as the gas tax fund, gas tax funds, excuse me. Uh, in addition, um, if there is additional funding come coming from uh the federal government Uh, or provincial government due to stimulus or anything like that, uh, we will be keeping our eyes open, uh, you know, going forward to see if those Uh, revenue streams are available to us. Um, hopefully that uh, answers that.
Okay, thank you, Brenda.
Welcome.
Thank you, councillor Sharp. Councillor Ritchie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, through you, uh, to Brandon. Thank you for this report. Um, I did have the opportunity to go and meet a couple of private residents to show us around and show the significance of this bridge. And there's a lot of history to this bridge and so forth. And if I may suggest anything, there's the individual and we can, you can I'll let you know who it is later, uh, in private conversation. He actually has some uh, some pictures of it back in the early days. And if there's any way to incorporate any of those features, um, while we're designing, it may or may not be possible. But if it is some, if there is a possibility, maybe even be able to look at heritage for a little bit of a uh, for any funding that they may have, it may be able to open up and broaden Um, any, any, any grants or anything that 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 happens if we have some features in it. But just, uh, and I don't know if we can even do that, but uh, I want to thank you for the report and uh, I learned a lot when I was there About this bridge and the history of this bridge, and uh, it's actually a very important piece, I believe, for uh, for our town. And anything we can do to replace this bridge is uh, of great assistance. So thank you very much for uh, bringing this report forward. You're welcome.
Thank you, councillor Ritchie. Uh, up next, we have councillor Bothwell?
Thanks. Uh, councillor Ritchie basically just touched on exactly what I was going to say and suggest is that there is, um, as he mentioned, a significant history to that area And the bridge and the moatstone on the property adjoining it. And um, I, yeah, if there's any way to draw on heritage, capital heritage funds through grants, Um, I think that's a great venture to try to to after. So I appreciate councillor Ritchie bringing that forward because I agree totally with him that Um, if anything, this has um, um, a lot of, um, a lot of Uh, importance and history to the town, and uh, I think it could easily substantiate um, a grant submission. So thank you for that.
Thank you, councillor Bothwell. Um, yes, it's certainly a bridge that's been uh, in our community for a long time and uh And it was originally a road bridge before uh, the pedestrian bridge was uh, was done. And um, it is something that that we really need uh, for part of our walking tours uh in town, um, for that thoroughfare Uh, to bring it back uh, to uh, two-foot access um, across town. Need a mover and a seconder? Moved by councillor Cadwell, second by councillor Vane. Moved by councillor Cadwell, second by councillor Vane, resolve that report DPW twenty dash eighteen dated July twenty 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 Regarding Gibson Street Pedestrian Bridge Engineering Design for Bridge Replacement be received And the council authorized the director of public works to retain Ellis Engineering Incorporated To provide design and contract administration for the replacement of the Gibson Street Pedestrian Bridge at a total estimated cost of Thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and excluding HST. Recorded vote councillor Bothwell?
Yes.
Councillor Dunstall?
Yes.
Councillor Frake?
Yes.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yes.
Councillor Ritchie?
Yes.
Councillor Sharp?
Yes.
Councillor Vane?
Yes.
Councillor Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes. That's carried. Up next, we have report DPW twenty dash nineteen Sunflower Subdivision Assumption of Municipal Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so again, this purpose of this report is to get council's authorization to assume the municipal services and roadway Associated with the Sunflower subdivision. Uh, the subdivision's located on the north side of the QEW at Lorne and Diana Avenue. The authorization here would include uh, release of the developer's remaining letter of credit And approval of a bylaw to assume the the actual roadway. Uh, again, I'd be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Brandon. Uh, councillor Bothwell has a question.
Sorry, um, to to Brandon, um, sorry, acting director, um This assumption of the roadway, um, being a full road, street, I know that um, it is a thorough, it is connected to the other interior town roads. What's the difference between um, subdivisions such as um, Lake House or Bravo here that I'm in Um, with respect to assumption of uh, services? So we have the sewers and the storm catch basin through here as well. Um, and yet the condo boards are responsible for the main in these developments. What's the difference between? Um, because I've had residents ask me this, how come um, the the town doesn't assume The the sewer and the in the uh, infrastructure underneath our subdivisions? And what's the difference here with uh, the roads and that and that assumption?
Sure, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So in this case, the Sunflower subdivision, it's actually a subdivided land. So there's a number of individual parcels in that property, uh, and the uh, I guess the the, for lack of a better uh, word, the Connecting uh, look, uh, spot is is the roadway in front of it, so, which is a municipal-owned road allowance. Uh, when you're talking about um condos subdivisions, uh, it is essentially the same as a large building. If uh, if you built a a twenty-story building, uh, or you took that twenty stories and you spread it out over the course of a a a large property. Essentially, uh, the, any plumbing that goes into that building is considered plumbing, is considered on private property And is subject to uh, a shared agreement uh, in terms of a condo board or um, uh, to basically service those individual units. Um, so hopefully that explains it.
Thanks. I just, I guess that's because in Azure, there was one road in Azure subdivision that that was deemed a street and the town assumed it. So I don't know what the difference is. It's just, it's hard to explain sometimes to people that um, how, why the town assumes certain roads in certain subdivisions and not in others, that's all.
So maybe the best example is if we look at the Lake House subdivision, so you have the uh, Place Polynese and Hunter Road, Which are both municipal road allowances, and then everything internal. So I, there's a belief, there's a number of lanes, laneways which are internal that are Owned by uh, you know, the the private condo owners, I guess, would you say, the condo corporation itself. So uh, I I I think the the main benefit in that is is um, the, uh, when you're talking about intensification, Uh, you know, having condo properties, uh, you're able to intensify and narrow the roads and they don't have the same Wits and 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 requirements as that. So you're able to achieve more density within those developments than you would if if you had to create a A a larger municipal road allowance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, councillor Bothwell. Councillor Dunstall is up next.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan, to uh Mr. Wort, Wort, Wortman. Um, I just curious, uh, this subdivision's been around for a number of years now. It, I believe it was Lassani that built the homes. Is this normal to wait this long to assume Uh, those uh, services and uh, to hold the developer to the uh Uh, line of credit for this number of years? Is this, is this normal?
Uh, sorry, through through you, Mr. Mayor. So essentially, um, in this case, uh, the primary services, so that basically they got the road completed and and all the services Uh, completed to the satisfaction of the town back in twenty thirteen. There is a a three-year maintenance period that is mandatory under our agreement. So it takes till, you know, twenty sixteen where it was uh Officially to the point where we could then consider assumption. Um, in terms of the the time between that assumption period that was eligible and the current period now, Uh, you know, it's just a matter of the developer uh, satisfying all his obligations under the agreement. So uh, if there's any deficiencies outstanding, sometimes they take a a period of time to rectify. Uh, and and it all depends on how eager uh, the developer is to get his letter of credit back and and how hard the town pushes in terms of Uh, pushing him to get get that work done. So um, again, you know, just essentially at at the end of the day, Uh, the town makes sure that all all the developers' obligations are met and any deficiencies are complete and we're satisfied Before we take it over, uh, regardless of how long it took uh, to to get to that point.
So so you, what you're saying is it took a approximately an extra four years to get all the deficiencies looked after and And so on and so forth, then, eh? Okay, I I, I'm just surprised, uh, a letter of credit is like Ha- having a loan in a sense, so that developer has that uh, out there for Uh, that number of years, and he's got to pay for that letter of credit. So I'm just surprised it would go on for an extra four years. Anyhow, thank you for your answer.
You're welcome.
Thank you, councillor Dunstall. Councillor Cadwell?
Yes, uh, thanks, Mayor Jordan. Through you too, Brandon. Brandon, I remember when that subdivision Yes, uh, thanks, Mayor Jordan. Through you too, Brandon. Brandon, I remember when that subdivision was, uh, excuse me, started. There was some concerns and issues with the noise retention wall. And, uh, is that a, uh, is that a concrete wall? I just, I'm trying to think back, uh, Brandon. It's been quite a while. But we also, as a town, we are now also assuming that noise retention wall for a maintenance standpoint too, aren't we?
I'd have to check, uh, sorry, through, through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd have to check, uh, again, some, some subdivisions are, it, it depends on what the subdivision specifically, uh, had, had dealt with in terms of uh, the design of the wall. Some, some subdivisions, it's located on a common element, uh, some subdivisions, it's located on, on, on the municipal property. So I don't have those details handy, but I can certainly look into that and, 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 uh, provide that information to you. Again, regardless, uh, we wouldn't be assuming it if it wasn't in, in the proper condition and there wasn't, uh, you know, any deficient, if there was any deficiencies on it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's great. I, yeah, I'd like to get that information, Brandon. I really appreciate that. Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Cadwell. Uh. Anyone have a first round? If not, uh, we'll go to Council Bothwell. Council Bothwell?
No, I think it's just my hand wasn't lowered. Sorry.
All right. Okay. No problem. Uh, so we just need a mover and a seconder. Thank you, Brandon, for your report. Um. Mover, Council Cadwell, seconder, Council Vane. Moved by Council Cadwell, second by Council Vane, resolve that report DPW twenty dash nineteen delayed, dated July twentieth, twenty regarding the assumption of municipal, municipal services for Sunflower subdivision be received and the Director of Public Works be authorized to release the letter of credit in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And the Director of Public Works be authorized to issue the final certificate of completion of services and that the mayor and the town clerk be authorized to execute the necessary roadway assumption bylaw. Recorded vote, Council Bothwell?
Yes.
Council Dunstall?
Yes.
Council Frake?
Yes.
Council Cadwell?
Yes.
Council Richie?
Yes.
Council Sharp?
Yes.
Council Vane?
Yes.
Council Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes. So it's carried. Up next, we have, uh. Report F, Report DPW twenty dash twenty, our Ward of Contract PWC twenty dash zero three sanitary sewer flushing and closed circuit TV inspection. Again, Brandon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so as part of the town's annual maintenance program for our sanitary sewers, uh, we retain the services of a contractor to flush and video a portion of our sewer system. Uh, the videos, uh, look at deficiencies when that, within our system, which we then prioritize for repairs as part of our, uh, sewer rehabilitative rehabilitation programs. A little bit for this tender was Danboro Environmental at the cost of seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. That excludes taxes. Uh, we have worked successfully with Danboro in the past and we are recommending award of this work to them. Uh, if there's any questions, if you have to answer.
Thank you, Brandon. Uh, any questions, Council? Seeing none, uh, mover and a seconder. Council Sharp and Council Vane. Moved by Council Sharp, second by Council Vane, resolve that report DPW twenty dash twenty dated July twentieth, twenty twenty regarding the award of contract PWC twenty dash zero three sanitary sewer flushing and closed circuit TV inspection be received. And that the Acting Director of Public Works be authorized to award the contract to Danboro Environmental Incorporated in the tendered amount of seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-five cents excluding HST. And that, and further that the mayor and town clerk be authorized to execute the contract documents. Recorded vote, Council, Council Bothwell?
Yes.
Council Dunstall?
Yes.
Council Frake?
Yes.
Council Cadwell?
Yes.
Council Richie?
Yes.
Council Sharp?
Yes.
Council Vane?
Yes.
Council Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes, so it's carried. Report DPW twenty twenty-one, award of contract PWC twenty zero four, purchase of new articulated four-wheel drive wheel loader. Again, uh, Brandon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so that through this report, we're recommending the award of the purchase of a new front-end loader to replace our existing loader. Uh, existing loader has exceeded its retirement date and is in need of, uh, replacement. Uh, we are recommending purchase of a new twenty twenty John Deere Model five twenty-four L by Brant Tractor, uh, which met the requirements of our specific specifications and was the low bid in terms of a new, uh, model vehicle. Uh, if there's any questions, we have to answer them.
Thank you, Brandon. Any questions from Council? Seeing none, we need a mover and a seconder. Council Dunstall, Council Cadwell. Moved by Council Dunstall, second by Council Cadwell, resolve that report DPW twenty dash twenty-one dated July twentieth, twenty twenty regarding award of contract PWC twenty dash zero four, purchase of a new articulated four-wheel drive wheel loader be received and that the tender from bid from Brant Tractor in the amount of two hundred and two thousand, five hundred plus applicable taxes for a twenty twenty John Deere five-two-four L loader be approved and that the Acting Director of Public Works be authorized to enter into a purchase agreement with Brant Tractor. Recorded vote, Council Bothwell?
Yes.
Council Dunstall?
Yes.
Council Frake?
Yes.
Council Cadwell?
Yes.
Council Richie?
Yes.
Council Sharp?
Yes.
Council Vane?
Yes.
Council Vardy?
Yes.
I mean, yes, uh, that's carried. Thank you, Brandon. Report DPW twenty twenty-two, request for appeal of decision to deny state site alteration permit request for four forty-two Soby Road. Brandon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is in follow-up to, uh, Mr. Dros', uh, delegation earlier, uh, this evening. Um, so the purpose of this report is to deal with, uh, his, uh, Mr. Dros', uh, request to appeal the decision, uh, to deny his site alteration permit request. Uh, the report outlines the background, uh, and timelines in terms of the works that have been, uh, carried out to date by the owner, uh, and the orders, uh, uh, slash decisions issued by the town. Essentially, what this comes down to, uh, is a decision whether or not our bylaw permits landscaping burns to be constructed on agricultural zone lands. Uh, and in staff's opinion, uh, the construction of a berm would take away from a portion of the land which would be farmable. And in our opinion, uh, it's contrary to the section, uh, VIII twenty-one of the bylaw, which, uh, states, uh, that a permit can only be issued if the alteration will result in maintaining or improving the overall agriculture capacity of the land. Uh, for this, uh, reason, staff is recommending we do not support Mr. Dros' permit request. Uh, that being said, we have provided a section, section, sorry, a second option for Council. Uh, should you wish to proceed with allowing Mr. Dros' request, uh, should Council wish to proceed, uh, i- in this direction, we would recommend that the owner submit a proper permit application, fees, et cetera, uh, that, and, uh, and meet the conditions of an open, uh, house, given that the amount of material, uh, having been brought in is greater than a thousand cubic meters, uh, and that staff, uh, bring a report back to Council once the conditions have been met. Uh, staff would caution Council that deciding to permit these works, or sorry, to permit these works could set up, uh, uh, us with difficulty in the future in restricting, uh, construction of berms on private property in agricultural zoned areas. Uh, I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Brandon. Uh, first up, Council Vardy?
Yes, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to, uh, Mr. Wortman. Um. So are, are berms just a bad idea? I wonder if you could just talk to us a little bit about that. Um, I know that earlier on, he mentioned that, um, he was building a berm as a, as a buffer for potential organic farming. Now, is this a standard use of a berm or maybe I, I just liked a little more information about that, please?
Uh, thank you through, through you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I, I also noted that comment as well. This is the first that I have heard, uh, using a berm or, or providing a thirty-foot buffer, uh, around a property. That's something I've noted that to look into, into more detail. I, I, again, this is the first I've heard of that, uh, as a reason for providing a berm. Uh, previous to this, uh, our understanding was his, his main focus was to, um, visually, visually or optically, uh, remove, uh, the sightline of, of seeing the, the biodigester next door. Um, you know, I ju- just to speak to other, his other comments as well, he, Brian did mention, uh, that he, uh, that he had worked with the town in the past in terms of allowing, uh, roadside drainage. Uh, he did some grading on his own property to, to accommodate that and, and we are thankful to, uh, to Brian for that. Um. And, uh, there was one other, one other comment to, um. And, oh, his, his comments with respect to the contractor, uh, not being truthful. Um, I'm inclined to, uh, take his side with that. Again, you know, not, not know having the entire details, but I've seen over the last little bit, trying to manage this, uh, this site alteration bylaw. Um, we've seen that, 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 uh, these contractors are not always, um, and I'm not saying this one in, in this specific case, but we have seen that contractors are not always truthful with the residents. So, you know, they, they walk up and, and they say, hey, I got this dirt for you and, uh, we'll move it around for you. And, you know, if you've got a need for it, here it is. Um, you know, don't worry about it. Yeah, you're a farming practice and you're exempt under the bylaw. And we'll have it done in a couple of days and, and be out of your hair. Uh, and then we end up getting a call as this work is taking place. And then we get in, in, in touch with the owners and then we have to basically try to enforce the bylaw. So, um, so, you know, again, with, with respect to Brian's comments about, uh, the contractor maybe not being truthful, I'm inclined to, although I don't have any proof, I'm inclined to think that he's probably telling the truth there. So, again, i- i- I, I feel like, um. If, if there wasn't a bylaw in place and this is what he was proposing to do, i- does it make reasonable sense? Yes. Is it, is it affecting his neighboring properties? No, I don't believe so. Uh, but in terms of the bylaw we have in place, it specifically says, uh, with respect to agricultural property, uh, that we can only permit it if it, it betters the agricultural capacity of the land. So in this case of how I, how I'm looking at it and our staff is looking at it is essentially he's constructing a berm which is taking away capacity of his land to, to farm. Uh, so I, I guess I'm reading it right to the letter of the law. Um, and I, I guess that's the position I, I've taken, which I've outlined in the report.
Yeah, I, like, I'm quite sympathetic to Mr. Drost. But, uh, the last thing I want to see is berms all over the mountain and just, uh, you know, uh, a whole pile of trucks there. Um, you know, when he first talked about a visual barrier, does not have enough of a berm there that he can plant some trees on now. I mean, he did, he did get, you know, a fair amount of, um. Soil. I mean, I, I, I feel a, a, a little bit that, you know, uh, maybe he's been taken advantage of in, in a certain way. And, you know, I hate to see someone who's kind of honest, but, but maybe had been a bit naive, get, get penalized. But at the same time, the bigger issue is we can't have, you know, we can't have berms all over the mountain because that'll just be the next excuse to build more and more and thirty-foot-high berms. So, um. I, I'm, I'm just wondering, I'm not sure where other people's comments are, are gonna go, but, um. I wouldn't want to see him penalized for what's happened. Cause I think it's been done, you know, uh, from an honest place. Um, but at the same time, I, I'm not so sure we should be allowing berms.
So I, I'd like to, if I can, Mr., uh, Mr. Mayor, um, so with respect to, you know. I, I understand the position he, he may have been put in and, and, and it is a difficult position. Uh, maybe just to clarify kind of what the process should be, if it was done properly is, is essentially, uh, under our bylaw, an owner is supposed to approach us in advance, provide a, what is, what is called a fill notice. So it's a, a one-page, two-page form, just identifies the quick and dirty in terms of what he's proposing. We'd receive that form, we would look at it in relation to what our bylaw says, and then we would determine, okay, is this eligible for uh, a, a permit in the future or is this work exempt under our bylaw? So certain operations, tilling of land is considered exempt. So in this case, uh, you know, the, the owner did not provide this information, the, the, the actual notice of fill until after, uh, we had issued the order. So again, um, in, in a perfect world, we would have said, no, we don't feel this is, is appropriate and, and, uh, uh, please don't bring in the, in the material. Uh, in, in this case, that, you know, this, this happened, uh, kind of after the fact. Uh, our understanding now is he's brought in roughly eighteen hundred cubic meters, so that's a hundred and eighty truckloads roughly. Uh, his intent now is to not bring any more material and it's just to, uh, use the material that has brought on, uh, has been brought on site and use that for the berm. Uh, he will need to bring in some more topsoil to actually, uh, uh, provide, uh, vegetation on top of the berm. Uh, but in, in, in terms of, uh, what he's indicated to us, uh, he's not planning on bringing any more material in. So hopefully that addresses or clarifies that.
Are, are we asking him to remove the berm?
Uh, so again, through you, Mr. Mayor, the, the only appropriate answer is, is yes, because, you know, if our permit says this work isn't permitted, uh, the risk we run by saying, oh, well, you brought it in now, uh, we'll let it go is, uh, the next guy who does it is, oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of the bylaw and and, and this is what we're running, we're finding what we're running into is, is by the time, uh, we're aware of these issues, uh, the material's already brought in and, and now it's becoming expense on the property owner in terms of, uh, getting that material removed. Um, going forward in the future, we are looking at ways that we can now hold, um, the source site responsible for that material. Uh, in, in, in the case where we're gonna look at, uh, holding securities on, on their part as well to make sure that, uh, in the future, this doesn't happen. The current, uh, source site, uh, we don't have those mechanisms and, and available. So unfortunately, this all falls onto, uh, onto Mr. Dros' shoulders. And, and again, I, I feel for him and I think he's in a rough situation, but I, I, I really feel that I'm, uh, stuck here, um. Uh, ensuring that we're, we're, uh, adhering to the requirements that's outlined in the bylaw and making sure that we're not setting a precedent going forward.
So, so Brandon, if I might ask your opinion, um. Should we be looking at through the planning mechanisms when developers come and say they want to do X, Y, or Z? Should we also be requiring a filled disposal plan?
So, uh, uh, sorry again, through you, Mr. Mayor, um, that is one of the items that is coming up through new legislation, uh, through the, that the MS, uh, Ministry of Environment is, uh, imposing. Uh, on, on top of that, uh, we, we are, uh, requiring in the future that new sub, uh, new developments that come on board that will be having, uh, holding, um, a, a level of security, uh, aside to the developer to make sure that the material goes to a proper location. So again, it's, it's, we, we'd have both ends in terms of, we'd be able to enforce, uh, the permit, the site alteration permit in terms of if the materials re- uh, received to, to a site without, uh, authorization. And we'd also be able to hold the developer responsible for, uh, taking that material, uh, improperly to a site that didn't have the, the, uh, the, uh, appropriate, uh, permits in place.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Brandon. Uh, thank you, Council Vardy. Up next, we have Council Vane.
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Brandon. Uh, Brandon. I, I, this is the first time I've heard the gentleman speak. I've never met the gentleman, but I'm kind of inclined to be supportive of organic farming myself. Um, but I, I get what you're saying about setting a precedent. I guess I'm looking for a recommendation. I guess I'm looking for a recommendation. Are you, and I get the rules are black and white. I, I understand that completely. But at the same time, could we not use this as a one-off and uh, and, and maybe, I don't know, maybe we need to educate farmers um, through mailing or something and just say in the future, if this happens, you know, you will be held responsible. Uh, as, as, as you have said yourself, I think the gentleman was taken advantage of, but I think his intentions are genuine. I could be wrong. I'm just going on what I heard. What would you, if you were in our spot, what would you do?
Well, I guess there's a, there's a political decision and there's a uh, I, I honestly feel um, that I, that my hands are tied in terms of what the bylaw says. Um, I, 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 I feel that council's hand should be tied as well because, you know, ultimately I, I'm bringing a recommendation to you to say, here's my interpretation of the bylaw and here's, here's what applies. I, again, I'm also sensitive to what, what, what Mr. Droste is dealing with and, and uh, I, I have a hard time with the fact that he's gonna have to remove this material and it's, he's gonna have to pay money to, to get it removed. Whether he can go back to that contractor.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if that, that's possible, uh, but it, you know, if, if in good faith that, that uh, or if that agreement was in bad faith and you know, there may be some legal action he can take with, with getting a lawyer involved. Again, I don't, I don't feel Mr. Droste is, again, from all my understanding is he's a, a, a farmer that uh, farms his land and uh, and I think me, he may have been uh, taken advantage of here. Um, the one, the one thing I think may be unique to this situation is the fact that, you know, it is adjacent to a industrial site, uh, for lack of a better word. So I, I, I don't know if that, this, this situation would occur at, at, at other locations in town or this is a unique situation. Um, that might be one avenue that council can look at and say, you know, we had some ownership of this, of this site at, at one time and, and uh, you know, being good neighbors, although we're not currently their neighbor, that may be one avenue that we look at. Again, I, I'm, I'm cautious because I don't know how that sets us up in the future that, you know, the next guy down the road comes and says, I want to build a berm and uh, you guys let uh, this guy build a berm, so why can't we? So, i- i- it's gets us in a very difficult position in terms of saying no in the future. Um, I mean, the other, the other aspect of this is because it's dealing with a such a large amount of fill, it goes through a public process. So, um, it gives neighboring properties the, the ability to uh, provide concerns if, if there is any, although the material's already been brought in. Um, it does, it is subject to a, would be subject to a public process where the public would have input into it. So, um, but again, not that we wouldn't take the public's uh, uh, comments or, or uh, concerns into consideration. Ultimately, it comes down to us enforcing that bylaw and, and what, what it says in the bylaw. So I, I really feel it, you know, we're, we are in a bit of a, a difficult spot here.
My concern is that he wants to allegedly create an organic farm. To do that, he requires the berm to prevent his, protect his property from the chemicals. So I am kind of torn on the fact that he's growing food. And I know in the past you had, I believe it was you had something where a farmer went to the farmer board or something, I forget what it was. It was a while back. And, and I'm just reluctant to, to penalize a farmer who's trying to do something very positive. But I, but I see both sides. So it's just gonna be a tough decision, that's all.
So, so to clarify that too, again, my understanding is uh, through the uh, um, the ver- the, the farming agency, I can't remember the, the title now, might be Oma- Omafra, but essentially uh, the, the business should be registered and, and Mr. Droste can go to Omafra and indicate to them what, what his, so that's the other thing that we haven't really received and it's through his, his uh, notice of fill to date is, is uh, any detail with respect to um, what he wants to do with the property other than creating a berm. So again, this thirty meter buffer again is, is, is the first time I've heard of this. So, I'm not aware and uh, like it, I, I'm not a farming expert. So if, if uh, if uh, someone with expertise that I don't have was able to come forward and say, listen, there's a valid reason for why Mr. Droste wants to do this. He wants to build a berm to act as a windbreak or, or needs a buffer or whatever. I- i- if he can provide that information and it supports his agricultural use, then, then, then I think we uh, as staff could support it because it, again, it, it makes sense. Um, from the perspective, we've been looking at it to date is it's essentially been uh, he wants to create a berm as a visual obstruction to his neighbor. Uh, and again, this is an agricultural property. So it's not, it's not like it's an, an industrial property will be subject to a site plan application. It's, it's strictly uh, for farming uh, purposes and, and uh, it gets difficult to.
Would you have any objection if we deferred this to next month's council meeting?
Uh, I personally don't have any objection, no.
The reason I say that is that maybe then you could reach out to him and explain what you just said to us that he needs to provide this information. He gets a month to do it. And at least if he shows in good faith that he's trying to do it and trying to prove he really is a farm, I'd be more inclined to support it. Right now, I'm kind of like you with black and white and the rules are. So, but at the same time, he's a farmer. So, I think in this particular situation, um, it might be worth waiting a month. I could be wrong. I mean, it's up to the rest of the council to support the idea or not, but it might be worth giving him an extra month if the rest of the councils wanted to support that.
I'm certainly happy to defer it. Uh, as far as organic farming regulations, uh, it's not necessarily a berm. It's just a ten-meter uh, setback from the edge of your fields for um, certified organic. But uh, that being said again, um, or his organic uh, farming um, uh, uh, proposal, this is the first I've heard of it um, now. And, and I think uh, giving another month so we can learn more um, is, is probably the best way to go. So uh, if you want to continue speaking on it, pardon me?
I'd like to put a motion forward to defer. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, that's okay.
Put a motion in to defer this till next month and just give them an opportunity. Uh, Jeff, Mary, you would have more experience in this than we would. Um, I, I mean, I, I'd be interested in hearing your opinion on this.
Yeah, I, I do have an opinion on it. Um, it, but uh, quite frankly, with um, organic, it is a process and, and he seems to know a little bit about uh, organics with the five-year um, there's a five-year period uh, and a lot of testing involved. So I, I think giving him a month to um, come up with, with more information because we want to do the right thing here and I know it's a difficult situation, but leaving us open for uh, for unraveling everything we've, we've come forward with and getting this bylaw into a good place. Um, I think we need to uh, to certainly have more information available. And um, maybe even um, communication with their neighbors, Miller, uh, to, to um, see about talking with, with the neighbors to see what Miller's plans are for that. That is actually a farm field. Uh, there's a farm field between the actual biodigester and the um, and uh, his property. So uh, I, I think deferring, I'm quite happy to defer and I'm, if the former, or the speakers that are going forward, if they want to speak on it, I'm happy to entertain that.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I just interject? So,
Sure.
O- option number two, we do talk about like, so essentially I, I've given you two options. Option one is, in, in the report is essentially, you know, we give him an order that he has to remove the material in a certain period of time. Option two is essentially we give him an order to say he needs to submit a permit to us and go through all the process in terms of application fees and providing the necessary details to us so that we can review his um, his uh, his permit uh, in more detail. That doesn't preclude us from denying his permit at a later date. But what we've tried to avoid uh, going forward and kind of as, as staff is we don't want people to put a bunch of money into uh, a process that we don't think we can support. So, I guess option two may be a viable alternative to the, the deferring. It, it is, he makes a formal permit application to us. As part of that permit application, we can ask all those proper questions. Uh, he can submit the appropriate permit fees and he can go through that public process. So, I just wanted to give that as, as an option to council as, as, as one uh, way of, of proceeding with this by uh, rather than simply deferring if, if, if that's the council's uh, purview.
Thanks, thanks, Brandon. Uh, the, probably the easiest way to deal with this is going through the speaker's list. So uh, Counsel Cadwell.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and through you to Brandon and just some of my comments too. Um, I, I read the report over and over and I think it's a good report. I know staff has spent a lot of time with Mr. DeRose and trying to be very uh, very coordinated and working, you know, just uh, working well with him. So, yeah, I was having a, I had a very strong look at option two, uh, Brandon and uh, and Mayor Jordan, just I think, because what, what I like about option two does, it also does uh, includes the uh, public open house too, which is good. You know, you want, you want to hear the neighbors and, and I, 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 I see the concern of Mr. DeRose with uh, and I, I know the uh, the, the, the new owners of the biodigester, they're gonna be great corporate citizens. I, I really believe that. But still having a farm located there and then he's got the landfill on the other side and that. You know, again, and then now, now he speaks about the organic as, as, as counselors have mentioned and I, I, I support that too. So what, I think option two is a uh, is a very good option to have a very strong look at. Uh, I would support option two. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cadwell. Counsel Bothwell?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I just wanted to confirm with Brandon. Um, I had pulled out a committee of adjustment um, notes from December twenty ten. And um, there was a land consent that uh, Mr. Droste put forward with um, Tony Quirk as his registered agent on behalf of Grimsby Energy, uh, when the land was originally severed in December two thousand and ten. And um, it conveyed ten hectares um, for the biodigester and he retained twenty point eight two hectares. Um, uh, and again, Mr. Quirk for Grimsby Energy authorized for the owner um, appeared before the committee and stated that Grimsby Energy is proposing the biodigester, blah, blah, blah. And there's, they'll have no objection, requested conditions of approval. So he acted on behalf of Mr. Droste at that time for the severance in two thousand and ten. Um, and it's ten years later now and I guess the biodigester wasn't obviously in full operation for quite some time. And now we're looking at it being actually profitable and productive. So, um, for quite a while, he would look out his window and probably see not much happening. And it was, it was um, not a problem, but now that they're actually looking at um, upping production and they're, they're, they're doing something, um, the berm has appeared. Um, the concern I have too is two things. Uh, one of the neighbors at this committee of adjustment meeting at four twelve thirty road um, was objecting as well, didn't want to look at the tank farm from the biodigester. So I'm, I'm a little concerned that it is gonna set a precedent for the neighbors. Um, and the other thing is just hearing the organics for the first time as well was unusual. Um, and I just don't understand how organics and turkey hunting with all those lead and shotguns and stuff goes together. So, cause he, he seemed to say turkey hunting and hunters quite a bit. And, and I just don't know how you do that with organic um, on the same property. So I, I would like to see, you know, if there's, you know, moving his cow production or whatever the, the production he's currently doing for his farming um, into organics is gonna work. Um, but I, I'm just also, I'm a little wondering, you know, we're ten years into it now that he sold his land to the biodigester. And now um, he's concerned that he doesn't have that, uh, that he's concerned about it being next to him, but he hasn't done anything in that ten-year period. So, it's just the timing is just, you know, yeah, I guess it's because they're in production now and it's become more of a nuisance, but just want to, does, does that anything have to do with any of that?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, I, I wasn't aware of that he was involved with the, the previous sale. Uh, I'm not sure if that would change my uh, decision in terms of whether I felt the uh, bylaw applied or not. Um, the one thing I can say, you know, I believe the, the biodigester has created a, a, a bit of a berm themselves. My understanding is they may be coming to us in the future uh, with some uh, betterment of the land. Uh, could there be an opportunity that the biodigester provides uh, such a berm on their property rather than on Mr. Droste? That could be an option. Um, is that something the town could consider as a, as an alternative for um, you know, him, him relocating it? Uh, again, I'm not a planning expert, uh, but uh, I, I believe that the uh, biodigester site would be subject to a site plan application and, you know, uh, the berm created there again would be probably suitable, given it's a industrial site rather than an agricultural capacity uh, land. So I, I mean, that may be an opportunity in, in the future as well that, that uh, that we could explore.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bothwell. Counsel Freak?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Brandon. Yeah, I, I would support, I would support uh, your uh, item two for sure. But you know, quite a few good ideas that come up here in, in this, this conversation, which is great. When I listened to Mr. Droste, he sounds pretty authentic, honest. I mean, he's been there a long, long time. I mean, farmers have to work really hard to make their land productive. And maybe he's just looking for another way to go with this organic farming. But I, I think all the questions that you put forward there a while ago, I think should be part of that sussing out what exactly he wants to do. If we have to make some kind of, we just need to work with these guys. I'd hate to think that we would, you know, would, would interrupt his livelihood or, or, or the future of his livelihood by, by doing the, making, making the wrong decisions right now. And I think that you going into the uh, looking at the application for um, for, to go forward. I mean, I think that's the way to go and, and get all those answers and try and work with this guy as much as we possibly can without setting the wrong precedent. Cause as, as all the other counselors said, we, we've worked really hard to put this bylaw in place and we don't want to see it go astray. So uh, but I, I really think that we need to uh, put our hearts out to farmers who put their so, so much into the land. And this is what Grimsby is all about. This is an agricultural community. So, but at the same time, we want to make sure that they're not hoodwinked either. So, uh, but anyways, I, I trust your, you and your team that you will do the right thing and find out all the answers and, and bring it back to us so we can make a final decision. So uh, yes, I think we need to, I think item two would be the way to go. Anyway. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Brandon, for the report.
Thank you, Counsel, Counsel Dunstall. Up next.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to Brandon. Um, so what I, what I'm hearing is that we are, if the berm can be um, shown as it could be useful for his organic farming, then it has a purpose. And then we should allow it to be. But if it's just there for aesthetic reasons and has nothing to do with farming, we shouldn't allow it. And you're saying that the option two, would that be covered in option two then if we uh, he has to present a permit, he has to prove that the, the berm has some validity and, and his organic farming. And if so, then we should allow it. Is that, is that kind of the gist of all this?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. That, that's correct. Essentially, uh, once it gets to the permit stage, we have the ability to ask for whatever additional information uh, the director or council sees fit to uh, request. And, and we can be very specific in terms of those, that information uh, to have him prove to us that uh, this is a, it's not an, it's a not an, an eye or an optic thing. It's a uh, a betterment of his land to provide whatever type of farming practice that he's using. And it's, it's a requirement for him to do that. So, again, we're not, we're not here to stand in the way of farmers. We're here to make sure that uh, that their land is being used properly in terms of uh, that again, that they're not bringing in a berm just for the sake of uh, again, I'm not saying this is the case, but receiving money from a contractor to dump it there. Or, you know, there is a benefit to these contractors in the fact that they uh, if they find a cheap place to get rid of it, it, it's a benefit to them. So, you know, instead of taking it to court, to, to the quarry and having to pay uh, dollars per truckload, they, they get to get, get rid of it for free. So again, that's why we're there to, to make sure that, that there is a, a reasonable use for that, that, that uh, that fits within our bylaw.
Okay. Yeah, well, I, I'd be supportive of deferring it for a month to allow him to have that time to do that. And then we could go through the permit process. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Counsel Dunstall. Counsel Ritchie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of points that I heard about this was that this individual has really tried to work with the town in the past in regards to doing the ditches. He's, he's been very honest. He made some comments that no money was taken. We are making statements as this is the first that he's looking at organic farming. And I was just looking at the application of the bylaw and it allows certain works to be exempt from the requirement to obtain a permit, such as result in maintaining or improving the overall agricultural capacity of the land. So I think that if he's going to organic, it would be improving. Or it could be, the berm would be required to protect the soils from the wind and so forth. So it would be improving the agricultural land. So I do think that, that the individual has shown that he's worked with the town in the past. He's been, he's, we have no reason not to believe him. Mayor Jordan has made a statement that he seems to know a little bit about organic farming. And I would like to see this deferred so we can get more information. Because if this is his purpose, I don't see a reason why, any reason that we have not to believe him and that he might actually be exempt from the permit if I'm, if I read that correct. And so I like to ask, am I reading that correct? Is that if he is doing that, that he might be exempt?
So my understanding is it, the, for him to be exempt, it would be, he'd have to be doing it as a, what's the, the word? As a, as a incidental practice to his farming operation. So if he's tilling the land, then it's considered incidental, incidental practice. Bringing in material to build, to build a berm wouldn't be considered incidental. It's not saying that we couldn't approve it. It's just saying it would be not exempt. So it'd be subject to a permit, subject to a review and, and, and such. So I hope that is clear.
And so like, like I said, I, I guess that's, I do understand what you're saying. It just, just like I said, the reading that the bylaw provides a specific conditions to which the director can issue a permit, being the alteration will result in
Correct.
or improving the overall agricultural capacity of the land.
Correct. So I can issue, we can issue a permit. It's not saying it's exempt. So it's saying that is a, an acceptable practice that a permit would be issued under and then he could do those works in accordance with the permit. The question here is that, that specific phrase in terms of, is it improving the agricultural capacity of the land? Maintaining or improving the agricultural capacity of the land? That's, that's where, to me, the whole decision point lies. Is a berm creating or, or improving or maintaining the agricultural, agricultural capacity of the land? If he says, I need this berm because I'm growing this certain type of crop and needs to be a windbreak. And again, that may be, maybe be able to be supportive. If he's just saying, I'm taking these existing crops that I'm growing on my land and I'm putting a berm here and, and I'm going to be losing a portion of my crop growing land for this berm, then to me, that is not supportive.
So, so, so thank you for the answer. I, I understand it there. And I, I do think that we have some more questions that need to be asked. And that's why I like to, I, I think that the right thing to do is to defer this. So we have accurate information to make the, the right decision. And if that means we come back and we put them through the process, at least we'll have the information. And we're making, we're making a, a decision based on knowledge instead of just making a decision where we, where we're not too sure. And like I said, this individual, even though this might be the first we've heard of it, I think that he's shown a, a, a good rapport with us that, you know, he, he's, he's, he's been honest in every, any dealings that we've had in the past. And I think that this individual needs to be given the benefit of the doubt. So if there's a motion to defer, I would like to second that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have another comment, please.
Well, Counselor Sharp hasn't spoke on this yet, so Counselor Sharp will be up first. Counselor Sharp?
I think it's, oh, sorry. I think his screen may be frozen.
No, I think I'm on now. Am I on?
Yeah.
Okay, so my question is, how much material has he brought on site now approximately?
So approximately 1,800 cubic meters or 180 truckloads?
1,800, so 1,800. So that's more than what we would require a public meeting for.
Correct.
By almost two times.
Correct.
That's my only question. Thanks.
So we've gone around one time with everyone and we do have a motion to defer on the floor. So procedures to vote on that first. So moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Ritchie, resolve that report DPW 20-22 and contents contained therein be deferred. Well, let's say deferred to our August 17th meeting. So I'll read it again. Moved by, moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Ritchie, resolve that report DPW 20-22 and contents contained therein be deferred to the August 17th, 20.
Point of inquiry there as we made the motion there, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to ask Acting Director Wartman if the meeting in August would give you enough time? Or should we defer this to the September meeting? I'm just curious. I don't know vacation schedules, so forth. But I wanted to make sure that you would have enough time to, or whoever's working on the case to look into it.
So, so thank you through, through Mr. Mayor. So again, I guess the question is, are, are we deferring the decision? Like my, the option two that I'm proposing as, as the alternative to having him remove the material is essentially he would have to apply for a permit, submit that permit to us. We could identify conditions. He would submit a, a fees to us that would, again, get him in the process of, of making a valid application for a permit and we'd run him through that process, however long it took. If we're deferring it a month, then it's, again, I, I guess the mechanism is I have to go back to him and say, here's what I need from you before I can consider whether a permit applies. So I guess that's where I need clarification in terms of that direction. In terms of the, the timing of it, I, I, I think at this point, it would be really up to Mr. Dros to, to prove it to us that, that it, it, it falls within the requirements of the bylaw. So could we turn that around in, in a month? Again, I guess it depends on how quickly Mr. Mr. Dros can provide that information to us. I see Harry shaking his head no. So maybe, maybe September would be more appropriate.
Through you, Mayor, if we could say, you know, we'll make best efforts, but no later than the September meeting. And if, if we get cooperation form, from him, you know, maybe we could bring it sooner. But I'd hate for Brandon, he's, he's away for a while and we'll try our best. But if you could leave us some latitude and when we come back.
Can we just defer it then indefinitely and we'll call back when, when required?
That would help. And then if we can bring it back August, we will.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, so, so I'll leave it as the first way it was written, just be deferred. Don't put a date in there. So Counselor Ritchie, okay with that?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I would like to, yeah, I'm very okay with that. And I'm not sure if Counselor Vane, who made the motion, wanted to clarify just that where, you know, it's to, it's for our staff to investigate, you know, to make sure that, you know, the purposes are, that he's looking at maintaining or improving his overall agriculture. So we have some information so that, you know, so we're not just going out and making a decision without having the accurate information. So that, that might help mitigate us making an improper decision or setting a precedent.
Great. And I got a thumbs up from Counselor Vane, so he is okay with that. So I'll read it again. Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Ritchie, resolve that report DPW 20-22 and contents contained therein be deferred. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frick?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Vane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm yes. So that's carried. Report DPW 20-23 Livingston Avenue Extension EA Part Two Order, request submission. Brandon, busy night tonight?
Yeah, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So this report provides counsel the details with respect to the Part Two Order that the town requested the MOE to consider in their decision relating to the Livingston Avenue Extension EA. Essentially, we're asking the region to further review improvements to the Main Street West as a viable alternative to extending Livingston Avenue through the Woodlot due to the potential impact the extension would have on the natural environment. We're also asking the minister and region to hold the project in abeyance until the GO station project commences. From here, we're essentially waiting for the MOE's decision. We understand that they have a, a minimum of, of a 45 days period beyond, beyond that to respond. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Brandon. Counselor Sharp?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I just have a comment. So I was, I posted about this report today on my social media and I, and I got a lot of negative feedback. I got a lot of people saying that, I think that they didn't understand that we're, that this Part Two Order is challenging the region's preferred option. And I just wanted to clarify that, that I don't support the road going through the Woodlot. We feel as a council that the environmental impacts were not properly taken into account during the EA process. And, and I wonder if the town, can we possibly educate or produce something? Normally, I'm pretty good at explaining myself, but there was a lot of negativity and I was posting just the information. So is there anyone or is there any way we could create some kind of a, an information about that? That's something that's easier for the public to understand?
I guess through you, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm not sure, other than what we've done to date is we provided the information, in fact, the actual submission, whether or not we can provide some information, additional information on our website. Maybe that'd be an alternative. I, I don't know. Maybe I'll defer to, to CIO Schlang to pop in, I guess.
Through you, Mayor, to Counselor Sharp. Are you saying just the Part Two Order that we submitted, just put that in more common terms for the public to understand? Okay, Brandon?
Yeah, people, like it's, it's kind of wordy. Maybe it was my fault for posting too much, but obviously they misunderstood. I could try to reword it, but it might be better coming from staff.
If we're directed that way by council, I'll work with Brandon to see if we can put it in some common language and add it onto our website as well.
Okay, thank you. Do we need a motion for that? Should I make a motion or?
Just direction if we hear from most council that they would like that, that'd be good.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to receive the report. Is, is that where we're going? Counselor Sharp?
Well, if, if anybody has any other comments, like the CIO was talking about, if majority agreed, I don't know if we need to add to it. You receive it and to, if, if, if the, if the majority of council is supportive of just providing something on the webpage in more layman's terms, I don't know if we need to make a motion.
Counsel, we'll, we'll do that. Doesn't seem like there's any objection and we'll take that direction.
Okay, I appreciate that. I, I think that we can just receive it.
All right. And thank you, Counselor Sharp and CIO Schlang. Need a mover and a seconder now. Counselor Frick and Counselor Vane? Moved by Counselor Frick, second by Counselor Vane, resolve that report DPW 20-23 regarding the Livingston Avenue Extension EA Part Two Order Request Submission Be Received. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frick?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Vane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that is carried. Report DPW 20-24 Amendment by, to bylaw 16-82, parking and stopping prohibitions along Kelson Avenue and North Service Road?
That's me again, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
So this report is to receive authorization to amend our existing bylaw. Again, that's 1682, to restrict parking on Kelson Avenue, both sides, from Winston to the existing parking area, which is at the north limit. And also to recognize existing no-stopping signs on the North Service Road near Old Winston Road or the Fifth Wheel property that had not previously been included when the region transferred the road to us. Both changes are to deal with the conditions that are being caused by the significant increase in visitors that we're seeing at our beaches during the COVID heat wave. And we're just looking at a, a way of helping to control the, the parking in those streets and properly ticket where people are adhering to safe parking. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Brandon. Counselor Sharp?
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. I read through this last night and so this is in my ward and this is at what I would call Kelson Beach. But so it seems in the report that this is some kind of a COVID measure and, but it will be added permanently to our traffic bylaw. So like, I'm not in support of it. That we have, it's a road that goes to the beach. It's a, it's a popular beach. It's actually, in my opinion, the best beach in Grimsby. There's the most sand and it's the most level. Our other beaches, it almost immediately becomes like an embankment that goes straight up. There's a smaller area. When the water level goes up, there's really no beach and not much sand in this. So it's obviously a, a spot that people want to go to. And if, if staff could confirm, I think there may be as nine or 10 spaces at the end. But I mean, if the measure is temporary and we're talking about COVID, then, I mean, we're moving into phase three next week and, or this week. We're moving into phase three on Friday. So the phase three allows 100 people gathering in an outdoor space. And then a beach is an outdoor space and that is the best beach in Grimsby. So if you presume like average three people per car, some come in groups of two, some come in groups of four, some come on their own. So 100 people, that's like 33 vehicles. And so I think that we're moving in the opposite direction. Normally, we want to promote use of public spaces. Normally, we want to promote use of, of town-owned beaches. And this is essentially, it's, it's a rural road. There's no, there's one house at the end. And, and on the one side, there's a farm. And on the other side, there's a Department of National Defense, whatever. There's, I think there's a firing range there, but there's also some training stuff that goes on. But parking on this road, I mean, I don't see the parking as the problem. If the problem is gathering, then, then I don't, I don't support limiting parking as a measure to prevent gathering. And especially because gathering on Friday goes up to 100 persons outdoors. And so anyways, to, to close, I'd just say that I don't support this at all. And that area of parking on the side of the road is, we should allow it. We should allow it. It is currently allowed and and we should continue to allow it.
So through, through you, through you, Mr. Mayor, just to offer some clarification. So. I understand that there's been a, this is, this area has been a hidden gem of the municipality. It's a nice, beautiful area, beautiful spot. I don't disagree that. It should be shared and the issue that we're running into is we have neighboring properties. So essentially, we own the road allowance up to the water and it's about sixty-six feet wide. Our neighbors to the west are the Conservation Authority and our neighbors to the east are, is the defense lands. What's happening now is instead of allowing ten people or ten cars loads of people to use our road allowance. We're getting a hundred carloads of people that some are using the defense lands, which is private property. And a lot are entering illegally to the Conservation Authority lands on the other side. The Conservation Authority has, at the same time, are feeling a lot of pressure in terms of their beach and are being overwhelmed, as I think a lot of the beaches are. So they are asking for our assistance to try to help curtail some of that illegal access. So in the past, again, hidden gem, not a lot of people knew about it. It's now the words out there and people are flocking to that area. More of not to use the road allowance, but to get free access to the Conservation Authority. So. We are working with the Conservation Authority to try to help alleviate some of those issues. We can't do everything. But we are, we have agreed to provide some fencing in between the town road allowance and. And the Conservation Authority property on a temporary basis to, again, try to delineate our property versus theirs. I would just say in terms of us, I think we should be responsible as. Our, as it being our road allowance, that if we feel we can't fit a hundred people. In, in with that narrow sixty-six foot. Space that that's the reason for the parking restriction. So we're not saying you can't come visit. We're saying we have a limited number of parking spaces to accommodate roughly how many could people could use that beach without abusing it and entering onto other properties. So that was our reasoning behind that.
Thank you, Brandon. Just before Counselor Bothwell, I just want to add a little. Personal insight to Kelson Beach. I happened to go down there on Saturday and I do have a video that I will forward to the rest of council. Just to see the type of congestion that, that was going on on Saturday afternoon. There were cars parked all the way up to Winston Road and. And it, it was so busy that the, the one house that was at the bottom on the west side. The children had actually started selling water, pop chips and, and they were actually quite busy. I didn't count the cars, but forwarding the video, you will see that there, in my estimation, there were at least eighty cars there. And there were cars that had parked up Kelson all the way up to the service road on both sides in front of the houses there. So it is actually really impacting the owners of the houses that are on Kelson. So I, I understand where Public Works is coming from with temporary measures for parking. It is a hidden gem, but as Brendan said, it is only sixty-six feet wide. Counselor Bothwell, sorry for that being a little long.
Well, thank you for the, yeah, the perspective. I was, I was trying to understand from both Brandon and the Acting Director. Thank you. I understand that Fifty Point would have those concerns because I've heard that before and. I just wondered, is it an option to, I, I don't expect we're going to see. Since I've been living in the area, I've never seen it like that, that bad as it is, was this past weekend, as, as the mayor is indicating, but I'm sure it's because of the stir crazy. COVID stuff that's going on and everybody's flocking to wherever they can get out from out of town. Is there a way to just, and I don't know if it's even a solution, to do the east side? The people can park in the east side, but not the west side. One side has a really deep ditch, the other side not as much, I think. I just wondered if restricting it to one side of the street. Is an option? Or, you know, you're thinking it's still going to push people, like people are still going to be parking along Winston and Kelson anyway, but. I, I don't see it as a, like, like Counselor Sharp said, it's a. A summer problem, a short-term problem. The water is not that warm that often. So it's, it's not a year-round problem. It may not even be a problem next year if, if we don't have COVID. So doing it permanently, I just, I just have a concern. That, you know, that might restrict the one or two extra cars that might park up there. In the future, like, what, is there an option to do one side only?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we originally started out with posting the west side of the road temporarily. So we put temporary signs up. And actually, the first time we saw it, most of the people were adhering to that without us putting the signs up. But what we realized is. You know, we're still getting a hundred vehicles regardless of, if, if we post just the west side. So we felt it was important that we had to post the opposite side, the east side. Where, you know, they were already parking, but again, we just felt that the capacity. Was unreasonable for us to allow that amount of people onto a beach that, again, we don't feel could, could actually use that beach properly in terms of our property. So in terms of the fact that temporary versus permanent, right now, we're suggesting an amendment to the bylaw. There's no reason why we can't amend the bylaw a year from now and review it a year from now and see if it's still a problem. We're suggesting the, the changes now essentially put the, to a legal. Legal enforcement. So without that bylaw, we can enforce it. So by, by enacting the bylaw now, it, it does make it permanent. But again, there's no reason why we can't change that a year from now. Again, our. Our feeling behind this again was that there is adequate space at the top end of the, of the road that would allow a, a, a limited number of people to use, use the, use the road allowance for beach access. Again, beyond that, could we look at making it a little bit bigger to fit twelve cars rather than ten? I mean, that, that's a possibility as well. It's just. It, to make improvements, there would be some financial impact to that as well.
Well, that's, that's a good point you made because I think it is a very, it's six to nine or how many, nine space, six spaces, nine spaces there now. I think. Any place where we do have beach access, we want it to be public beach access and we want to, we want to make it available to people. So if we, we have the same problem, we don't have parking for all the other beaches. So. Yes, it is a smaller one, but it's still, as Counselor Sharp said, it is one of the nicer sand ones. So I think if there is a way to either move, if you're going to restrict both sides. Allow either another couple car lengths from our designated spots, if we can't financially add to them now, at least leaving them. On both sides to allow for another three or four cars on each side. It's just an option. And then starting the no parking, I think that is reasonable for the. Just the locals even to have access to the beach that's, that's available to them.
Can we phrase that as a motion or an amendment?
I don't, like, would that mean moving the distance? So instead of saying six, from six hundred and ten. Feet or meters or whatever it is from the boundary, I don't know. How would you?
Yeah, so sorry, yeah, sorry to interrupt. So essentially, we would have to amend the, the distance. So and, and without looking at it in detail, like, I don't think I could specify, you know, what distance we could add safely without looking at it in the field and making. A logical decision, I guess.
Can we reverse back for a, for an amendment?
Sorry, I guess that the question right now is, it's, it is, is an immediate issue. So again, that's why we brought the bylaw forward, so we could enforce that, issue tickets. The fact that we don't have a bylaw there now essentially means those tickets are, they could be challenged. So any delay in that further adds to that, that ability to challenge those tickets.
Thank you, Brandon and Counselor Bothwell. Counselor Cadwell?
Excuse me. Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Through you to Brandon. Yeah, I cycled down there last Wednesday. I was in the area, so I rode my bicycle down there and. They did have the portable no parking signs up on both sides of the road. Makes sense to me because that ditch has got to be on the west side. It's a ten-foot ditch, easy. You know, I thought if anybody was trying to turn around or, you know, if some, if a vehicle went in there, you probably wouldn't even see that vehicle, you know, it just, how deep that ditch is. I was, I was really surprised. I'm going to support this report by staff. I think. As I was down there, I, I had the, I rode my bike along the pathway right to the beach. I'm thinking it's about a hundred, hundred feet. It's quite a ways. I kept, I was surprised. And when I got down there and I was looking and there had to have been two hundred people on the beach. Mind you, there were people were keeping their social distance and that, but I thought, wow, this place is, this place is busy. So. Yeah, I, I do have concerns, especially with the, the, the one house that's on the west side, the one you're talking about, Mayor Jordan. That gentleman, he had, at that, when I was there Wednesday, he had some orange cones blocking his driveway ops because people were turning around or even trying to pull in. And then there's just to the north of that driveway, it looked like a, there's a gate that you can get into the Fifty Point area. Somebody was parked there. You know, I thought, well, that's great. If fifty, if the folks from Fifty Point had to utilize it or make use of it, there was a vehicle parked there. So, yeah, I think what staff's recommending, I, I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cadwell. Counselor Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to, to Brandon. I think we're experiencing this over, over parking issue in various parts of the town. I mean, the beaches are also putting up with some similar issues. But in this case here, I mean, is there an issue around possibly like emergency vehicles being able to access the area when all that parking is going on down there and it's over? When can these vehicles get in there if they need to get in for emergency purposes? I mean, that's got to be an issue as well. I listened to Counselor Cadwell with the deep ditch. I mean, that's got to be a serious problem as well. So. I, I will, I will support what you're saying, but, but is, is that taken into consideration, the, the access for emergency vehicles like fire trucks or whatever? Is, is that something we should be thinking about too? To endorse your, what you're trying to tell us?
Yes, so through you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, that was one of the major items that we were considering is, is, you know, if there was parking on both sides, does that restrict a fire truck or an ambulance getting in? So that's why we initially looked at the west side and said, okay, for emergency accesses, we have to maintain at least one side. Then we reevaluated and said, okay, well, this isn't just an emergency issue. This is the fact that we're allowing people. To congregate on a beach which doesn't fit that amount of people. So again, that's why we, we determined both sides was appropriate. Again, we are, with respect to Counselor Cadwell's comment about the, where they were parked in that little entranceway. We, we suggested to the, the Conservation Authority that we'd install a specific sign on there. I believe that's emergency access for the. If Fifty Point as well. And we're also providing some additional directional signage or, I guess, informational signage. That's, we're, we're making up now that will clarify to the people who are visiting, what is town property, what is private property, what are the rules for using the beach, you know? One of the issues we have is, is after hours, people going out and having beach parties. So the existing parking there actually restricted overnight parking. So it was, it allowed it during the day, but restricted it overnight. So. Just another consideration. Hopefully that answers that question.
Okay, thank you, Brandon. I, I mean, I know right now we're going through this COVID crisis and I know there's, must be going to stage three, maybe some of these problems will disappear, hopefully. Or maybe we will find it, it won't change that much because people found a new good place to go.
Yeah.
Which is Grimsby, but that beach, that overcrowded beaches is not a, is not a very good scene either. So anyway, thank you. I will support what you're, what you're suggesting.
Counselor Ritchie, I believe you haven't spoken yet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm listening to counselors that represent the ward and. I can support this, this, this recommendation or this report, but I'd like to see it only go into effect till October first and then we revert back to the, the original bylaw. I think that if we put into effect October first and then revert it back. I don't think anybody's going to be using the beaches from October first on or possibly won't be having that many people. So I'd like to see us put a timeline into that to October first and then that will bring. You know, parking back to the residents that live in that area.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I like to put that forward.
I'll second that. This amendment?
Yeah, I think that can just be added to this resolution.
Maybe the best way to. Just to clarify this, so this would be a temp, a temporary change to the bylaw for a certain period of time.
Yeah.
Just with respect to Kelson and not, not the North Service Road.
Um, so I, I would, I would adapt your, your entire report to all the changes you've made. So the entire report would be taken on, whatever you, like, what you're added there, you've deleted and then added stuff until October first, where then we revert back to the original bylaw.
I mean, it can be done. I guess I would just. The way, I guess, the way I'm looking at it is. Regardless of the time of year, regardless of whether it's COVID or not, we've provided appropriate amount of parking spaces on Kelson, whether it's ten, twenty, thirty, forty. By restricting the parking, everything south of that, whether it's today, tomorrow, or a year from now. What, what my position is, is we've provided the ample parking at the north end, the south end, whether it's restricted or not. Well, the fact that it's going to be restricted going to the future is, we're essentially saying. Here is the allotted parking space that's suitable for that beach. So, I mean, I, we can modify the bylaw. For a period of time, if, if that's council's decision. Again, that's just to clarify, that's kind of the position or the decision-making that we had in, in coming to that, that decision, I guess.
Yeah, um, again, I'm just reading the report and it says, due to COVID nineteen restrictions which limit public gatherings, the town is proposing the following parking restrictions in effort to control the number of people accessing public space. So that's why I say that we should be looking to October first because, you know, hopefully COVID, you know, we can go back to normal come October first. Also, I don't think we're going to have the problems at the beaches after October first in that, and, and, you know, and hopefully by next year, things go back to normal. Again, if next year we see that there's a problem, then maybe we have to look at a permanent solution, but I don't think it's. I don't think necessarily for the counselors in that ward, they've both spoken up against it a little bit and I think they might know the residents best. And I think that, that I think I agree that we should be restricting some, some parking for the residents there, but I think this also allows them to get some feedback as to whether the residents like it or not. And come October first, we go back to the original bylaw and it can be discussed again in the future. I know it's extra work, but I think that might be, that's what I'd like to see happen.
Thank you. I think everyone's spoken on this except for Counselor Vardy. So Counselor Vardy, and then we'll. Oh, and Counselor Bane?
Yeah, I'd just like to know if there, through you, Mr. Mayor. To Acting Director Wortman. Are there bike racks down by the beach? Bicycle racks? No, so maybe that's something we should consider because that might encourage more bicycle traffic if people had a place to put their bikes instead of having to drive there.
Again, through you, Mr. Mayor, it's something we could consider. Again. It's, there is a cost associated with bike racks. If, if that's the direction of council, we can put an estimate together and figure how much that would cost and. I guess I would suggest that bike racks may be more suited to urban areas where there isn't anywhere to, to kind of lock up your bike. There is fence down there and stuff like that. So. I guess it's something we can look at it if, if that's the direction of council.
Just, just if I can. Step in on that. Most of the time when I do have seen bikes down there, they, they go past the barriers and, and they'll lock themselves to the chain link fence of the Department of National Defense. So. So, uh, there's a, a large area past the barriers, uh, where, um, there's plenty of room for bicycles. Um, there's, there's quite a big area, so. It, I, I don't think it's, it's really needed in, in this area. And quite honestly, any time, um, that being down there, uh, quite often we take the dog, uh, swimming down there and, um, and other years, there hasn't been more than two or three cars there. And even in a really nice summer day, um, mind you, it wasn't a weekend day. Uh, maybe six or seven cars. So, that's just my observations from being down there several times. Uh, Counselor Bane?
Uh, just something I wanted to mention to follow up on Counselor Frick's comment there, that with the stage three coming and, uh, Toronto and Peel region being exempted again, uh, we're going to see more people coming this way. So, I'm wondering how many of these actual people that are going there are from out of town. So, um, maybe I, I think I'm going to support the, uh, the bylaw. I appreciate what the, uh, Counselor Sharp and Counselor Bothwell said, but I, I do think we're, we're seeing an excessive amount of people that, I don't know, we, we haven't seen in the past. And yes, people want to get out, I get that. But I do feel we got some coming from other places. And just off the cuff thing that I missed earlier, um, for in regards to the Livingston thing, uh, maybe we should publish an ad in the paper to let people know what we're doing. Just communications reasoning, that's all. Anyway, sorry, didn't mean to mix the two together.
No problem. Thank you, uh, Counselor Bane. Counselor Sharp, would you like to comment?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Jordan. So, um, I think that the effect of, of approving this until October, I think that it, that it helps both the scenario that we're having currently, that COVID has created an extraordinary amount of people that have come down there. And, um, we, we have a thing where right across the region, all the way through Hamilton, Halton, to Toronto and beyond, right? So, there are some people that are, that are not going indoors, they're not going to restaurants, they're not going to shopping malls, they're not going to, um, Home Sense or wherever they go on the weekends. And, and they're trying to find, and it's great, they're trying to find outdoor things to do. But I think that, um, I mean, it was hot. We were in a heat wave. And, um, and there were other factors that were like exacerbating the amount of people that went down there. And I think that, like, I've lived here for a long time and I grew up on the west end and I, I know that area very well. And, um, it, it's not normally like that. So, um, but then, so we do have, I think there's nine spaces down there, maybe there's 10. But what happens is sometimes people park in a way where the first guy parks. It, it happens at the museum too, where people park kind of across two spots and then somebody parks. And you can turn nine spots into like six or seven spots. And then if, at the same time, you happen to get two people that come down there on their own to meet down there. So, now you've, you've turned nine spots into six spots and then you take two of those spots and you turn them into individual car spots. And, I mean, I'm stretching on, but there are circumstances where those nine spots only really support 10 or 12 people at the beach. And, um, so that road is, it's a rural road. There's one house that I believe is attached to that farm. And, and there's a department defense line. It's, it's all fenced. It's not fronting onto that road. So, um, it's like, so to, to, to enforce parking restrictions there, it become, becomes another issue. And, um, like I said, in the past, it hasn't been an issue. At present, I think the issue is to do with COVID and, and maybe is exceptional because of the heat wave we've been going through. But, um, I think that passing this until October solves our current problem and doesn't take us too far into a permanent change, right, that we would have to enforce. And, um, that, that's just my opinion. So, if, if I just have some clarification, have we amended this and what was required to amend it? And then can we call the question?
So, I, if I can add, add some clarification, so if, if we're talking about, uh, making this a, uh, under a certain timeframe, then it has to be, uh, the resolution has to be changed to a, a temporary, uh, bylaw amendment. Uh, if we're talking about the Kelson specifically, uh, then I think the Kelson and North Service Road have to be separate, uh, resolutions. Uh, the Service Road is already signed with no stopping signs. We're just asking you to recognize those existing stopping signs. So, uh, so maybe we modify the resolution to say that, uh, the parking restrictions on, uh, North Service Road or there's no stopping signs on, on North Service Road be carried forward. And that the, uh, uh, restrictions, proposed restrictions on, uh, Kelson Avenue be, uh, on a temporary nature until October 31st of this year. October 1st, sorry, whatever, whatever the date you guys want.
I, I, I would support splitting that motion into two. Um, as you indicated, and leaving the North Service Road on its own and Kelson with the temporary till October 1st, Dave. Counselor Sharp?
Yeah, I, I agree. I've, will second that.
Yes, the clerks just, uh, putting those together. All right, I'll read the, um, amended resolution. Resolve that report DPW 20 dash 24 dated July 20th, 2020 regarding amendment to bylaw 16 dash 82, parking and stopping prohibitions along Kelson Avenue and North Service Road be received. And that the proposed bylaw amendment for prohibition along North Service Road be approved and the prohibition along Kelson Avenue be approved until October 1st, 2020. How was that?
Sounds okay on my end.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, we just need a mover and a seconder for that then. Counselor Bane, Counselor Dunstall. Moved by Counselor Bane, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that report DPW 20 dash 24 dated July 20th, 2020 regarding amendment to bylaw 1682, parking and stopping prohibitions along Kelson Avenue and North Service Road be received. And that proposed bylaw of amendment for prohibition along North Service Road be approved and the prohibition along Kelson Avenue be approved until October 1st, 2020. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frick?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Bane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes. It's carried. Yes, uh, we just have, uh, the bylaw to, um, waive the rules of procedure to go past the 11:00 PM curfew. Need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Cadwell moved. Uh, seconder. Who's seconding it? Counselor Bothwell. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, seconded by Counselor Bothwell. Resolve that council waive the rules of procedure to go past the 11:00 PM curfew. Recorded vote.
How late are we going to let this go? Like, I have to work tomorrow.
So do I. Counselor.
Sharp. This is, this is going to go until 1:00 in the morning.
Counselor, our council has the, um, the ability to, uh, to probably pass it every hour if we decide to, um, to probably change this resolution. Is that correct? Pardon me?
Yeah, I, I prefer something like that, like.
Mayor Jordan? Mayor Jordan?
Yes, yeah, Counselor Vardy?
We have a lot of important business coming up to discuss. And I feel kind of uncomfortable, you know, getting into the financials and some of the other things like the sale of property at this late hour. You know, we've been at this for four and a half hours. Uh, I think we should schedule another meeting and, and deal with the, the rest of the agenda. I don't like, you know, the temptation will be, we're all tired. None of us have gotten up, um, you know. I, I want to be fresh and not rush through some of these items.
So, we have to.
Very, very important.
Mayor? Mayor, if I could have the floor, I agree. It's, it's late and I've been sitting here since 6:30. And, um, I mean, I just took a, a quick bathroom break without like asking for a recess, but this is, they're long meetings and, um, we have important things to deal with and the temptation becomes, let's just get this done.
Mayor?
I agree with that.
Mayor, maybe I, there are some times.
Yes, I, I agree with the counselors. There are some that can wait. That's the balance of the report. There are some that aren't that time sensitive and we can even carry them forward to the August 17th, but there are some time sensitive ones that really need to be approved, um, things like, um, that need some answers for tomorrow and some bylaws. But maybe if we could work with, uh, the mayor and the clerk and just focus on the time sensitive ones and see where we're at before 12. But, um, there are some that need some immediate, um, answers. But there are some that could even wait till the August 17th meeting, like the land, the financials. They, they were more like information and, and next steps, so they're not as critical from a timing point of view. If that would be acceptable to council.
I'm okay with that.
So, so looking at, uh, things that are definitely time sensitive, obviously the, uh, the, the restaurant patios and the, the Niagara Regional Transit On-Demand Service Memorandum of Understanding. I know those two. Are there any other ones that are time sensitive?
Just take a look. And the bylaws.
And the bylaws, yes.
Um, the treasurer said maybe the trust statements, but, um,
Okay.
If, if, you know, just so from a timing point of view, but he'll do those very quickly. Um, they're pretty, you know, pretty good, but the others are all very time sensitive. Do you want to do that first?
Sure. Include some community, it's not going to.
No.
Yes. Yeah. Still four minutes. Okay, so where's the motion to extend? All right, so what I, we've done is amend the, uh, motion to extend, um, to deal with the four items that need to be done. So, I'll read it first. Resolve that council waive the rules of procedure to go past the 11:00 PM curfew only to deal with items, uh, 7N, 7O, 11E, and 12A. And I think that covers everything. And now is, uh, council happy with that?
Yes.
All right, so I'll read this resolution. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, seconded by Counselor Bothwell. Resolve that council waive the rules of procedure to go past the 11:00 PM curfew only to deal with items 7N, 7O, or is that D? Is that D? Oh, 7O, 11E, and 12A. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frick?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Bane?
Yes.
Your big debut.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes, so that's carried with two minutes to spare. All right, where are we? All right. Resolution for that? All right, up next we have, um, the 2019 Trust Fund Statement Operations. Uh, Stephen? Stephen, I think you're muted.
Thank you. So, this is the 2019 Trust Financial Statements. And I'll just, I'll go through it, uh, quickly. There's not much, um, here that is different in most years. Um, so if you turn to page, um, 2217 in the agenda, um, you will see that we have two, um, two trust funds, uh, care and maintenance, one for grounds and one, one for markers. So, the financial position at the end of 2019, uh, is 1.131 million dollars. Um, we have a total of 1,480,000 dollars in the two trust funds. Um, and we have about $50,000 in interest receivable. If we scroll down to the next page, during the year, we collected $29,000 in, um, care and maintenance revenue from the sale of, um, cemetery plots. We earned about $23,000 in interest on, um, the monies that are in the trust. And then those monies that are in the trust that we earn from interest, the 22,000, we actually bring into operating to help fund, um, cemetery operations. So, you can see there's an expense for that same amount. So, we're increasing the 2019 trust fund by $29,000. And that's pretty much it. If there's any questions, um, I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you, Stephen. Uh, Counselor Sharp, uh, do you have a question?
No, sorry.
Uh, Counselor Frick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Stephen.
Hi.
Just a quick one for you. I'm, I'll probably ask you the same question last year, but I'll ask it again this year. The interest we're, we're, uh, receiving was how much again? Is 20, what'd you say, 20?
22,868.
22,868. It's very low for such a big investment. Is, do we look at, have we looked at other ways of increasing that? I see Harry laughing there, so he might have some ideas already. Uh, is there some way we can find a, a better way to invest that money to, to accumulate more than $22,000 on a million dollar investment?
Yeah.
Yeah, those investments, like all municipal investments, the main priority is preservation of capital. So they must be very secure investments, so we basically invest in government guaranteed bonds or GICs. And as you know, the interest rates on these are very low.
You're gonna be, we're gonna even have less next year because GICs right now are paying very, very.
Yeah, you're right. Interest rate risk now is very high because as these investments come due, the ones that we have, we will be reinvesting at an even lower rate. So you're actually correct on that.
Okay, so then, but because of the, the regulations, we can't move away from this. We have, we have to have some kind of guarantee that this is not going to be invested in areas where we have a potential downside.
Yeah, that's correct. The municipal act is very specific on the types of investments we can invest in. There's a big section in the, in the act that prescribes the exact type of investments, securities that even come right down to the bond rating of, of these investments. So yeah, it's very, very prescribed, very specific.
Understand. I know we have to protect the people's money, so yeah, understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Jordan.
Counsel Sharp?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Jordan. To Stephen, so can we borrow from ourselves? Like, because we have, so we take loans. For example, Sothard Park and the fire station, we have a debenture. Or we did. Is there any way that we can pay off our debenture? Unless, to make it so that we're essentially borrowing from ourself because we're secure. And, and if we're paying 3% on a loan, is it not better to borrow the money from ourself? For example, for the hospital?
Yeah, potentially. Like, for, let, let, let me take a step back here. So these funds here, these trust funds, we can borrow against. It is a trust. The monies cannot come out of the trust. They, they must remain in there. We can't use them. We can't borrow against them. In terms of borrowing against other investments, yes, potentially we could, like, if you're talking about the hospital. But for that, you're probably, you're looking at a 30-year term. And to encumber funds for that long wouldn't allow us to invest in any infrastructure, any capital.
Why are these funds in trust? Where, where do they come from?
When you buy a cemetery plot, we're required to take monies from the purchase. So the purchase price of the plot, a certain portion of those funds goes into this trust. And it's meant to create almost like you could see an endowment for future care and maintenance of the cemetery.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no further questions, just need a mover and a seconder for this. Counsel Ritchie, Counsel Cadwell. Moved by Counsel Ritchie, second by Counsel Cadwell. Resolve that the 2019 Trust Fund Statement of Operations be received. Recorded vote, Counsel Bothwell?
Yes.
Counsel Dunstall?
Yes.
Counsel Frake?
Yes.
Counsel Cadwell?
Yes.
Counsel Ritchie?
Yes.
Counsel Sharp?
Yes.
Counsel Vane?
Yes.
Counsel Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes, so that's carried. Next. Transit. Up next we have a report DPW 20-25 Niagara Regional Transit On-Demand Service Memorandum of Understanding.
Thank you.
CAO?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that we're excited to present this report to you. A real credit to council to get in on the ground floor of this opportunity. If you look at your strategic priorities, you talked about leveraging partnerships to provide a innovative solution for transit, and this is it. As you recall, Pelham and Lincoln were providing services with other providers and they're canceling those and joining in with us and the, the region of Niagara to provide this service. You know, we've been working with the region to not only connect us locally, but connect us to the rest of the region. And I have to really thank our staff and the, and the regional staff that we're also looking at when you talk to residents connecting to Hamilton through the Stony Creek, Winona Costco facility. So we're working on that as well. So again, this is a fantastic accomplishment by council. We're glad to roll it out for you. The MOU, we saw first draft. It's a pretty simple MOU. It just talks about that we have local jurisdiction to provide transit and we're consenting to that, to the region to provide that on our behalf. We're looking at prorating that to the end of the year, about 85K expenditure in our budget where we had forecasted 250. And as we presented to you in the COVID account, we could use that balance to offset some of our operating increased costs and revenue losses. But again, a really positive accomplishment by council and through staff. The region is really starting to promote this on August 3rd to get it started on August 17th. So great accomplishment. Thank you. And then we're just asking in the recommendation, Lincoln and ourselves use the same law firm. We're just getting them to do a quick review. Make sure that we have protected our interests legally. And we're asking the mayor and clerk to sign off on that in the next week or so.
Thank you, CAO. Counsel Cadwell.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Jordan, and through you to CAO Sling. I apologize. I meant to bring this up, or I thought about it after Counsel Frick had a bit of a briefing on that. But how many passengers are those vans? How many they hold? And I guess my concern, Harry, is because of the distancing, the social distancing, is there gonna, obviously there's probably gonna be banners in place. Maybe if they hold 10, maybe they can only take four. So is the region, from your perspective, is the region, obviously they have to address that too, the social distancing within those vans too for passenger delivery, so to speak.
Through you, Mayor, to Counsel Cadwell, there's a couple of things. One is they work closely with Public Health on the launch, or, you know, Medical Office of Health, and you know, there'll be all sorts of accommodations made for that. As well as probably mandatory masks perhaps in the van as you're, you're moving about. But I don't, you know, we'll, we'll see that as we roll out and that'll be communicated in the next few weeks. But yes, every precaution, the cleaning, the appropriate safety of this COVID issue will be addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cadwell. Counsel Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's still, there's still some detail I'd be interested in seeing, and that is, once we roll this out, like, where, where are the, where the stops going to be? How long between, between each stop? You know, there's a whole host of things, I think, which at, at the, at the ground level, we need to know. Is there something that we can see that?
We're doing this, right?
How long a route will take to get to X and, you know, all, all the, the minor details that we, we need to look at. Will we see that sometime soon?
Through you, Mayor, to Counsel Frake. Yes, our team and the regional team and the promotion will start to look at that. And as you know, then start to measure some metrics against that. But some principles of the levels of service and the types of service will be provided as we roll out between now and August 17.
So any, any chance we'll see that at the next, in the, at the August meeting, do you think?
Well, that's when they're launching the program, so hopefully in all the advertising and that, we can get some messages out. And we'll make sure council hears about that before the press hears about it.
Okay, look forward to seeing it. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Bothwell's up next.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I noticed there is a report in the July 14th Public Works Committee from the region. PowerPoint presentation, which if anyone's interested in looking up, it gives them some updated information on, on the rollout of the on-demand service. And they've moved from, they've transitioned from Mercedes vehicles, which they originally had in their presentation to us, to Toyota Sienna vans. And on one of the pages, they do talk about their COVID-19 policy, and they're talking about restricted number of passengers per trip, Lexiglass driver shields, masks strongly encouraged, and regular cleanings. So it's a, they're very small, like, it just looks like a seven-passenger van, if that, right? So I don't expect they're gonna be carrying more than two or three passengers maximum at any time of COVID. The, it'll be interesting to see the phone app. I'm hopeful that we can see that phone app before it actually gets rolled out. You can set your pickup time, you can set drop-off time, your ride proposal. And I'd like to see what the alternatives are for people who aren't able to use the phone app. So I think there's a whole lot of stuff that we don't know about, as Counsel Frake mentioned, with regards to how this is gonna roll out in the next three weeks or four weeks, we're looking at. When we haven't seen the phone app in, in any type of even demo or, or whatever mode, which would be really helpful to see. And also how we're accommodating people who aren't technologically savvy in, in that communication. Really, really important that we have alternative ways for people to understand what our transit system is and how to get the resources they need to use it. So I haven't seen any of that in the communication model. And considering we're so close to deployment, I'm, I'm just feeling a little bit left out of that whole. We, the last time they talked to us was December. And, and we're now like six months later and we haven't seen, and they're rolling it out in three weeks. So it just, I just feel like we're, we're missing a bit of information here, and maybe having a liaison that was, you know, regularly reports to us on this at our meetings is really important. The other thing in the MOU, which we haven't seen and we have no idea what it is, and I, I understand legal will vet it, which is great. But there's something in there that talks about, I was gonna go to the wording here, it says, although the agreement between the region and via mobility is for a one-year term with a one-year extension, the pilot program is with the mobility itself. The deployment of on-demand transit is proven globally, blah, blah, blah. I just wondered if there's, if that means that the towns, I understand the region is received all the municipalities' agreement to offer transit. But does that make us, it'll be interesting to see whether that makes us responsible in some way for this service. So I don't know how that's gonna roll out. And the reason I'm saying that is because the region is receiving all of the gas tax funds or all the transit funds that are allocated from the province for the delivery of transit services. So I just want to make sure there isn't an added pressure on us through that MOU, just watching whether we have a legal liability as a, a participant in the agreement outside of what the region's liability is to the vendor, that's all. But I'm sure you'll look at that when you look at the legal. But I'd be, I really hope for August 17th, we can hear a whole lot more about how this is gonna impact our community and, and what it means. It's great. I think it's exciting. But I really think if we're gonna do it right, like, we have to communicate this well, and leaving it till the last minute, it's not a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bothwell. Counsel Sharp?
Mayor Jordan?
Yep.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
You were, you were just, your hand was up on the speakers.
Yeah, sorry, my, my computer is like being slow. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay. So just to comment on this. So what I'm seeing is that the region is gonna do a public campaign starting on August 3rd. And so that's just, you know, a few weeks from now, a few weeks before it starts. And then this looks good, like, they're talking, it says that they'll operate from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And it says that it'll take Grimsby residents not only to all of West Niagara, but also to the rest of Niagara. But you, you have to transfer from there to another transit system. And it looks like they are having talks with the City of Hamilton to provide an additional connectivity to the Winona Crossing Commercial Plaza, where I presume you could get on a City of Hamilton bus that would take you to any appointments you might have in Hamilton. And or further. I suppose the GoTrain does that also. But anyhow, this, this looks good. I'm just happy about it. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Sharp. Seeing no, no other speakers, need a mover and a seconder for this motion. Counsel Frake and Counsel Vane? Moved by Counsel Frake, second by Counsel Vane. Resolve that report DPW 20-25 regarding Niagara Region Transit On-Demand Service Memorandum of Understanding dated July 20, 2020 be received by council. And the mayor and the clerk be authorized to execute the memorandum of understanding between the region and Niagara and the town against be to operate the new on-demand service with the town against be upon final review by town legal council. Recorded vote, Counsel Bothwell?
Yes.
Counsel Dunstall?
Yes.
Counsel Frake?
Yes.
Counsel Cadwell?
Yes.
Counsel Ritchie?
Yes.
Counsel Sharp?
Yes.
Counsel Vane?
Yes.
Counsel Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes, that's carried. Up next we have Section E, the downtown improvement area. Letter from the DIA of the patios, and I do have a statement to read on this before the resolution. That's number 12, we're on now. On Monday, July 13th, I accompanied the CAO and staff to meet with downtown businesses. The concept of closing the street parking lane on the north side of Main Street between Ontario Street and Mountain Street was proposed. This would allow businesses to fully occupy the sidewalks in front of their businesses for patio or retail space. Essentially, the closed parking lane would be used as a sidewalk. By Wednesday, July 15th, all businesses on the north side impacted agreed to support the concept. By Friday, July 17th, through the exceptional teamwork of the DIA, town staff, and region, the proposal was operationalized. The plan is aggressive to get things up and running for July, Friday, July 24th. Due to the extraordinary issues facing all of us due to COVID-19, those that absolutely cannot meet the 5 million insurance coverage, the town would agree to 2 million for only 2020. This is temporary. The cost of concrete barriers is $22,000. The DIA would contribute $3,000 and the town would cover the balance of $19,000. The DIA will also invest and be responsible for the beautification efforts for the concrete barriers. The period affected by this proposal is July 24th, 2020 to October 31st, 2020. The town will require a motion to pass this initiative. We want to thank those businesses for their understanding, specifically all of Board, Urban Cravings, and La Maison Rose, who have met all the town insurance obligations in the West End. Just want to say that, that we put this together very quickly and, and yet it's, we went through all the channels and there was considerable effort by a lot of different people. And I'm, I'm very proud of how we worked together to, to get this fast-tracked in essentially a week. And our CAO will speak on this further.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and there was a lot of support from many people to make this happen at this point. With about an hour into this council meeting, I, I was informed that we may have some additional costs. So I want to be clear to council that it could be as high as 23K for the town. Not saying that that's what it will be. And the B, the DIA has agreed to 4,500, so about their 3,450. But I just want to be clear that we might need that much more just to get things done properly. But not sure, but I wanted you to know it could be. But not sure, but I wanted you to know it could be as high an upset limit as 23K for the town and 4,500 for the DIA. But thank you, Mayor, for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Council Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we've come a long way in the last month. We've all put up with a lot of grief, and what we did in the end come through, and I congratulate and commend the DIA, the mayor, and, and the town team that pulled this thing together as fast as they have. There's a lot of moving parts, certainly a big challenge, and I'm hoping that it'll help our businesses downtown turn around in light of what's going on. Anyways, I just want to thank everybody for pulling together at the end. It's, it's been, it's been a tough few weeks, and we've all felt the pain in one way or another from the public and, and as well as with some of the merchants. So hopefully, we go forward from here, and we see some, if you see the fruits of our labor, and I, once again, I just can't thank you, everybody enough that they've come through at the end. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Frake. Council Vardy?
Yeah, great job, because this has been weighing quite heavily on a lot of people's minds. I'm just wondering, you know, the DIA doesn't have a lot of money, and is it possible to waive their, waive their portion, especially in light of the fact that we know we've got, we weren't, not going to be discussing it now, but we do have surpluses from 2019.
I can actually speak to that. No, I'll be happy to speak to that. Because the happening on Main Street didn't happen, the DIA had budgeted some money for that, so we have that, that money available. So so we're happy to, to pay for the beautification as the DIA. I'm speaking with my DIA hat on right now. We're happy to pay for that out of the DIA and the beautification out of the DIA. It's something that, that, that we have in our budget, so I think it just adds to the collaborative effort of both the town and, and the businesses downtown using some of the DIA money. Council Cadwell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and again, I echo the same comments as, as my colleagues. I'm really glad to see that the the partnerships all jumped in and town staff. You know, we came up with a solution. I drove out to Burlington yesterday morning. I sent some pictures out to all the council. And just to see how it, well, they're, they're, they're not Jersey Bears, but have barriers along Lake Shore Road, where the Pepperwood is, at Brandt Street. And the, the patios are all, they were busy. The way they were set up, it was good. It looked safe. I think ours is better, personally, because their, their barriers were plastic, and I kind of leaned on one, and hmm, okay. But I think what staff has come up with is, is a very good recommendation. And I, and I did, I got, I got answers. I had some questions. My, one question was, you know, was, was, were all the, or the good majority of the business on the north side going to take advantage of that extra sidewalk space? Because we're going to close it off, take away parking spots, which is, you know, it's for the right reason. So and I, the, the answer I got was a very, very strong supportive answer to it. So I think it's great. I look forward to seeing it, and yeah, and hopefully it'll be good for businesses too. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Cadwell. Council Ritchie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Yeah, I want to thank everyone that's, that partaked in this. I mean, you know, it was the UOC, the DIA, all those members, but I mean, right back to last, last council meeting, this council referred some of the letters right to the UOC and asked you guys to work on things to accomplish this, accomplish something in regards to what the DA was looking at, and you know, I understand earlier on, there might have been some communication issues and so forth. But at the end, you guys really pulled it off, and I want to thank you guys for all the hard work that you guys have done. I know that the businesses are much appreciated of it, and I just wanted to say thank you, guys, for the, the good work you've done.